All right. It's 2:00. And I am going to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Melina Raymond and I will be leading today's meeting in absence of our President Katie Simon-Holland, who is now a member of a jury for the next four to five days. So, four, two, five. Four dash five. So, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sure will. Glad that our student is back and not days been out in mountain for what, two months? You missed some. Well, we're so glad to have you, so I'm going to mark you present. Deborah Feenster.
Here.
Veronica Frankel.
I'm here.
Katie is absent. Scott Kelly.
Here.
John Mayer. Here. Melina Raymond.
Here.
And Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
Thank you that we do have a form, Madam Chair.
All right. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask our student representative today to lead us in that pledge. Ananti, please. JJ, do we have any public comment?
We do. Michael Pitkin.
My name is Michael Pitkin. I am a homosexual HIV-positive Satanist. As a child, I was sexually used. One does not have to be female to be part of the Me Too movement. As an adult survivor of abuse, I took medically responsible steps of self-care. My confidences, however, were violated by the religious right, the black community, and then the Latino or the brown community. I then started receiving ethnic, racial, religious intimidation, bullying, and then death threats. All of this caught the attention of law enforcement. Rather than receiving support from all as a victim, I am subject to entrapment, surveillance, fear, and intimidation. According to the John Walsh Society, and the Burne Movement, and many others, anyone who has been sexually abused is automatically a pedophile. That makes about as much sense as the Oxygen Network's Oprah Winfrey is a pedophile. I have never had the inclination to harm children. No one should be sexually abused, especially children. On the flip side, no victim should be subject to those who want to inspire fear and shame-based hearsay and gossip. I will stand up against any billionaire, politician, religion, celebrity, or law that calls me a pedophile. I will stand up against the pitchforks and torches hysteria. I am asking the city of Reno, along with its regional partners, to host a panel of local and national experts on the topic of pedophilia. I feel citizens need to hear all sides of this issue, not just one side. I've witnessed a need for biasedness education. A couple examples of the well-coordinated militant agenda. About twice a month, parents use their children to try to entrap me. Children, always alone, come up to me, all asking the same questions, and their parents are usually in their car, a block away, with their cell phones. Or Girl Scouts parents, who use their children to attain political support to paint school street crossings. Mind you, these sidewalk paintings are not depicting cute emojis of police officers with "stop, look, and listen," but rather depicting predators. This is my informal first step, and I will be following up with this. Thank you.
Rue Goodenrow.
Madam Vice President, trustees. My name is Rue Gooden. Now, I'm a citizen of Washoe County and a member of the Board of Directors of the Sky Tavern Junior Ski Program, and it's that capacity appearing here today. Marcy Hersch was an elementary school teacher for 10 years in northern Nevada. At Mount Rose Elementary in 1946, she created and supervised baseball, basketball, and volleyball for students. That's where she combined her love of sports with her love of teaching. She took her love of teaching out of the classroom and onto the ski hill, where in 1948, she founded the junior ski program. She took her love of teaching and founded the program in which I and many of the citizens of Washoe County participate, and we're proud to be associated with the program. We volunteer our time without compensation. For 70 years, this program has made skiing affordable and available to all Washoe County students, no matter their financial status, race, creed, color, or ability. Even kids with physical and mental challenges learned to ski through our adaptive ski program. Thousands of junior ski graduates grew up and put their kids through the program, just as I did. We continue to inspire the next generation of skiers to take up this life sport that families can enjoy together. It's also a sport that has significant economic value to our community. So, creating the next generation of skiers is helping grow the ski industry in the Reno-Tahoe area. These are just a few of the reasons why the Washoe County School Naming Committee ranked Marcy Hersch so high in their scoring, and we're grateful and humbled by that event. However, today, you're deciding on a name for a school in Spanish Springs. All of the backers of Marcy Hersch's school naming project have agreed that there are more appropriate individuals to have their name associated with this school in Sparks, and thus, we think it's best to defer at this time. We're asking that Marcy Hersch's name stay in the running for a future school that's more suited geographically to the junior ski program, like the future schools on Zalesi or Arrow Creek. This would allow Sky Tavern to play a bigger role as, say, a partner in education. We thank you for your time today and appreciate your consideration of our request.
Thank you. That's all at this time.
All right. So, the next item is to take action to adopt today's agenda. Does anyone have a motion?
Second.
Agenda is approved, and so we move on to the consent. Oh, sorry, vote. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. All right. Agenda item 2.01, approval of the consent agenda. JJ, do we have any public comment?
Not.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The consent agenda is approved. All right. We have moved on, then, to agenda item 3.01, discussion and possible action to interview Lori Hoover and Kirk Starkey for the position of chief auditor and make an offer of employment to the successful candidate for possible action. And our presenter today is Emily Ellison, and joined by...
I believe I sent a card to speak.
Oh, okay. So, we'll take a public comment from the Audit Committee Chair, Mr. Tom Daley. Thank you.
Tom Doyle, but close enough. I called worse names. Tom Doyle, I'm Audit Committee Chairman, Madam Vice President and Trustees. I'm up here just to kind of express a little bit displeasure for myself, and I know it's chair of at least one other member of the Audit Committee. So, I would like to, first of all, start out by reading real quick the summary for this agenda item, which is not on the small agenda. The position of chief auditor is open for applications July 2018. Officers of Chief of Staff and Human Resources vetted all applications. And then it goes on to describe that first process in which the Audit Committee sent one person to the board. The position was reopened for a third-day period, and following those interviews, three candidates were selected to move forward to the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee met on November 8, 2018, interviewed three candidates. Ultimately, the Audit Committee put forward Lori Hoover for final selection. However, upon consultation with the board president, members of the board trustees have requested the top two candidate names, Lori Hoover and Kirk Starkey, be put forward for consideration for a final selection by the board's trustees. Couple of things that is a concern. First of all, when we put forward one person before, only one person was put forward, period, and the board didn't come back and say, "Hey, we want the runner-up candidate to be put forward." Suddenly, on this particular one, and this is no offense to HR, no offense to either one of the candidates, in this case, we voted six to zero to suggest one candidate, Lori Hoover, be approved by the board. Of course, that was November 8. Now, it's November 27. Yesterday morning, to see if the assistance was needed, I jump on the agenda and come to find out that our recommendation was overruled, and essentially, the board decided to look at two candidates. Please note that nobody, as far as I know, on the entire Audit Committee was notified of this change in decision. Not a phone call, not an email, nothing. We would just simply, if we look at the agenda or show up, and I'm the only one, the Audit Committee usually shows up, we'd find out. Otherwise, no notification. So, we're very displeased on two fronts. One is the lack of notification to the Audit Committee to tell us that our decision has essentially been ignored. And the second one is the fact that our decision is being essentially expanded to two candidates. This is nothing against Kirk, but the fact of the matter is that we feel that our entire authority is being usurped, even though the board has the right, no argument there. But for us to be essentially, to vote six to nothing on a solution, and then the board to eliminate that, we're not too happy about it. At least, I'm not. So, thank you.
Thank you. And if I may just make a few comments about that. I know that our President, Simon Holland, did add this agenda item, and I was one of, I believe, a few or several trustees that requested that. I have not been on the board for other appointments like this, and in the work with all of our other committees, we often receive sort of a set of options, a ranking of choices, that then we, as the board, approve and decide on, such as later today when we look at our naming committee suggestions. The zoning committee is similar, and so I just thought that this process would be offered to us in the same way. And I can only speak for myself in that. I don't know if any of the other trustees would like to make any comment at this time. Sorry. Trustee Dr. Taylor.
Do I get to talk? Okay. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Tom, for being here. I think those comments are certainly... I think we hear them. They're well-stated, and thank you for that. I'm just going to go back to my... We don't do this, we haven't done this with other appointments, as asked in the comments, because we don't have any other appointments. I mean, in terms of employees, we have two employees, the superintendent and the chief internal auditor, so that hasn't come before us any other time. But I do think, and this is, and I've read the resumes of both, and I'm interested in some conversations, so this, I don't have a dog in the fight by any means, but perhaps what we should... Because it's my history, the history, the experience that I've had, is that they come forward as either as recommendations for who's suitable, who isn't suitable, and that ultimately that does still leave this body or the decision-maker in the position to make the decision. In my experience, at the university, for an example, if I'm the hiring authority, I certainly have a committee that may be the search committee, and they share their thoughts with me, but ultimately, I maintain that responsibility. These are recommendations, or these are suggestions, or these are pros and cons of each candidate, not because it isn't important what the committee thinks, of course it is, but at the end of the day, it's our employee that we have responsibility for. Again, this is no... I don't know either of the candidates or anything like that, but perhaps what we should do in the future is just make that really clear to the committee on the front end, and then perhaps maybe then minimize and perhaps even alleviate the expectation that the committee's going to make a recommendation, and we're going to go with it. Just making it very, very clear that this is your role, and this is our role, and this is how they fit, you know, together. Because I do think we were remiss by not notifying them on the front end that, "Hey, should have done this differently. This is what's going to happen." I don't think that statement is lost by any means. I think that was a mistake on our part, that never should have happened, because it does make committee members feel as though their work is invaluable, and we certainly don't want that. I mean, we have a lot of people that volunteer and work in committees, and we need that work, and we need that commitment, so I certainly regret that. But I do think that something else, again, that we can do in the future is make sure, in any similar type of a situation, that the committee is well-aware that these are the roles, that an expectation wouldn't happen that way, because I know that's not how any of us feel, and we certainly want them to feel valued.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, and well said, and I agree. I definitely appreciate all the work of the committee and the time that you've spent on this, and I don't see this item as in any way ignoring your recommendation. I think it was taking your recommendation as a whole, and then, as a board, having the opportunity to make a decision if we choose to do so. Trustee Frankel.
I just wanted to echo what Trustee Taylor was saying, and I think, for me, the position is a unique one, and the committee's a unique one. I think where we did error, and we should acknowledge that, is that there should have been communication prior, or to yesterday morning, to inform the President, the Chair of the Audit Committee about our decision to do this. I wasn't one of the trustees who was a part of that conversation, so it was news to me as well. But in looking at that and just hearing from Chairman Doyle, I'm very concerned about the absence of communication, and I'm hopeful that we learn from that and we can improve how we communicate with our committees, not just this one, but others in the future.
Thank you. Trustee Mayor.
Yes. I was not a member that got part of the decision-making here, but I think that we are looking at both candidates, and let's go from there, and just in the future, be more like the rest of the committees, like you mentioned, the naming committee and that, and have all the candidates ranked in their order, in which they get the votes. But I really feel we should go ahead and see these two candidates and see what happens.
Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add, I wasn't one of those committee members either, but I do think it is appropriate for us to maintain that decision. And then, to the best extent that we can, let's reach out and apologize for our mistake and make sure that it doesn't happen in the future.
Superintendent Davis.
And as you know, the staff facilitated this for the board. I wasn't privy to that for good reasons, but I think we've learned that there are some points to be taken around how we communicate with committees and the board, so it is clear, because there is, I think, some thought around that whatever the committee brings forth is what the board should choose, and that might not always happen. And so, we do have to do a better job, and staff will work on creating a better system of communication for any committee that brings forward a recommendation to the board, and what that means as part of the recommendation.
Thank you. I do think that's important, and I'm sorry it wasn't communicated better this time. So, if it's the pleasure of the board, then I will ask Emily Ellison to join us for the presentation. Is there any more public comment? All right. Thank you.
All right. Great. Good afternoon, Vice President Raymond, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. I am here to assist today in facilitating the interview process for the two chief internal auditor candidates that we have, Lori Hoover and Kirk Starkey. Each of you have been provided a packet as a part of this interview process, and we'll have an opportunity to review that in just a minute. But as many of you have probably not had the opportunity to take part in a public interview before, I wanted to talk a little bit about sort of the order of operations for this process, and then we'll go through the standard human resources interview orientation, so that everyone knows their roles and responsibilities during this process. What's going to happen today is that each of our candidates will come in. They are currently here, and so I'll go back and get the first one. We'll go through the interview process, and then you'll have an opportunity, as a board, to deliberate. Because it is an open meeting, the candidates have the option to be in the room when that happens, or to, if they wanted to livestream it from their car, they could, right? I will tell you that for the prior interviews with the Audit Committee, which is also subject to open meeting, the candidates have opted not to participate or watch that deliberation process. So, I can't say for sure what will happen, but they do have the opportunity to do that. Once you've had an opportunity to interview the candidates and go through the structured interview questions that we have in your packet, I'll come back up to assist with the process. If needed, I have some prompts that I can start the discussion with, or you may have your thoughts right away on the candidates and just dive right into the discussion. And then ultimately, as is true with any action from the board, someone will need to submit a motion at some point that then the rest of the group would vote on in order to make a final determination. Any questions so far? All right. So, then, from an HR orientation perspective, we like to go through the packet before each interview, and we also like to talk about some important things that help us ensure equity for our candidates as a part of any interview process. The first thing that we like to talk about is conflict of interest, and Reno is a small community, the biggest little city, of course, but I like to preface this conversation always by saying that just knowing someone does not represent a conflict of interest, right? That we know a lot of people, we've had an opportunity to work with a lot of different people. So, you may be in a similar situation where you've either worked with or had some kind of relationship with one of the candidates in the past. I really have kind of a multi-part test for whether or not something is a conflict of interest. So, the first thing is you want to look at each candidate and ask yourself the question, even if you do know the person or have a prior relationship with them, do you feel that you can be impartial in evaluating them as a candidate and evaluating all of the candidates in a fair and impartial way? The second is you want to put yourself in the shoes of the candidate that is not selected for the position. Would they think that any prior relationship between you and the person who is selected prevented you from being impartial and providing equal opportunity to everyone? And then, are there any interested parties that might think that there is a relationship that prevented you from being impartial? So, if someone, even someone that's not participating in the process, is watching or has a question about why a candidate was selected, would they believe that any prior relationship prevented you from providing every candidate an equal opportunity? So, you've received the names of both candidates now. Does anyone have any concerns or anything that they would like to disclose about a relationship with either Lori Hoover or Kirk Starkey? Okay. Great. The other thing that we like to make sure people understand as part of the interviewing process is that the district is an equal-opportunity employer, and there are a number of protected statuses that we are not allowed to use in considering any employment decisions. So, race, ethnicity, religious status, veteran status, sexual orientation, there's fairly comprehensive lists. I can gather the full list if you want and pass that out, but many of you have taken part in district interviews before. We have a number of safeguards in place to help ensure that we don't get ourselves into hot water when it comes to violating those protected statuses. Having a really structured interview question process is part of that. We ask the same questions of every candidate every time, so that we make sure that we are consistent and not asking anything that might solicit information that we shouldn't consider as a part of our decision-making process. I like to caution committees, though, that occasionally candidates will disclose information to us that we shouldn't consider, and we all have to really hold each other accountable during the deliberation process for not considering that information. So, an example might be that a candidate shares with us information on their family and how their family is supporting them in pursuing this position. They might share information on their veteran status or their history of professional experience in the military and how that's prepared them. We can't consider those data points as a part of our decision-making process when we are deliberating. We really need to stay focused on the job description, which is provided in your packet, and how each candidate's skills and experience match up with the qualifications that we're looking for for the position and for the most successful candidate. If you have a follow-up question, the best way to ensure, again, that we're providing every candidate a fair opportunity and not asking different questions of different candidates, is to refer back to what the candidate said in their response and ask them to elaborate. You said X, can you tell me more about that? Or can you expand on your answer to question two? If you have a question about how to ask a question, or you think that we might be introducing a new topic, I'll certainly be here to support the process during the interview, but if you stick with that sort of strategy for follow-up questions, that generally makes sure that we don't introduce any new questions, because inevitably, what happens is we think of a new question, a whole new topic, and we ask it of candidate two, not candidate one, and then we need to go back and make sure that the other candidates have an opportunity to answer that same question and provide that same information, so that we're really comparing apples to apples when we go through the deliberation process. So, let me look at my notes, make sure I didn't forget anything. All right. In your packet is a copy of the job description, which I mentioned before. I think that's an important thing to refer back to as we're moving through this process, so that we make sure that we are hiring the candidate that will best meet the qualifications of the position. And then you also have a copy of each candidate's resume, and you have a note taker. I always like to say that human resources is not going to grade the way that you use the note taker document, so use it in whatever way is most effective for you during the deliberation process, so that you can recall what each candidate said and what your perception of their strengths and weaknesses were. But please do keep in mind that every piece of paper in this packet comes back to human resources at the end of the process. So, if you're like me and you make random notes to yourself on whatever piece of paper is available, your grocery list is coming back to HR. What questions do you have?
You can't take that back.
Well, let me think about that. Luckily, we have two candidates. When we have more, it's harder to keep track of all of them, right? I'm sorry, Melina.
Just one question. Would it be your recommendation, then, that we, the same person, ask the same question too? Does that matter? Are we asking the questions, I should say?
So, you can really do any format. David and I have typically gone back and forth versus having the whole committee ask questions. You could ask each of the questions. I'm going to be sitting back here, so it'd be awkward for me to ask questions from behind them. But what I will help keep track of is if someone, let's say we're interviewing the first candidate, and another question does come to mind, something that was not covered in the five questions that we have, I will keep track of any new questions that are introduced, so that when we interview the second question, we can make sure that we ask that question of the second candidate as well.
Okay. Would it be helpful to the board if we just go around the room and, starting with Trustee Dr. Taylor as question one, skipping me and Trustee Frankel being question five to ask?
Sure.
Okay. Just for clarity. Okay.
As someone who recently went through the panel interview process, I like that approach too, because then you're kind of looking at different places, right? Connecting with different members of the committee.
Okay. Trustee Frankel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Question five I will be asking, and one of the questions I have about question five is, we ask them if they have questions for us. Any suggestions or tips on how best to answer those, if the answer should come directly from the Chair, or how we should best answer those, and the possibility of dialogue ensuing from there, and are there any issues or concerns you have about that?
No concerns, really. I think that the questions will most often be fairly general in nature, and so, you know, they might ask things like, "What are you looking for in an ideal candidate?", that sort of thing. Whoever feels the most comfortable taking that response. For the sake of time, you might want to, you know, designate one or two people that are going to take follow-up questions as appropriate, but it really just depends on the candidate. Some of them have questions, some of them don't. We haven't run into any issues with the nature of the questions, but also, I'll be sitting right back here, so if anything gets weird, I can wave my arms at you or something. Time out. Time out. All right.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, Dr. Taylor.
And please, Emily, give me your take on this. I would like to, you know, I guess, pass on my question one and just add another question. I would like to ask a question of each candidate pertaining to their commitment to diversity.
You'd like to add a question?
Yes. Would that be okay? If both of them were asked the same question? Is that allowable?
Yeah, as long as we ask both candidates the same question.
Okay. So, I don't need to ask two questions, so we can come around, and I'll just ask that right before that last one, because that last one's kind of the last question. Is that okay?
So, you'd like to insert that as question four?
Yes.
Okay.
As question five.
The new question.
The new question, five.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much.
If you restate that again?
I'm going to be allowed, thank you, Emily, to add a question regarding each candidate's commitment to diversity. commitment to diversity.
Then I think if this works for the trustees, I'll ask question one and then we'll move over to trustee Kelly around the circle and back to trustee Dr. Taylor. Okay. Okay, got it.
Yeah, of course.
All right. I think then we are ready.
So I'm going to take down the questions so they don't take them.
Thank you so much for joining us today and taking the time out of your schedule to be here for another round of interviews.
Thank you.
What we've decided to do is kind of go around the room with some questions for you and I'm going to kick us off.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. I just wondered if you would please briefly review your job experience and try to limit it to about three or four minutes.
Okay. I graduated the University of Nevada with a business administration degree with an emphasis in accounting. Got a job at a small local CPA firm where I earned my CPA certificate and performed financial account auditing. I moved into the gaming industry and I performed mostly compliance and some operational audits throughout my career with the gaming industry. Moved around a little bit, ended up at one, excuse me, one, the Sands, one casino, one gaming business. And I actually spent about 17 years there. I supervised individuals in that capacity. I was both internal auditor, the director of internal auditor there, and the director of information systems during that time period where I also, again, performed some compliance and operational audits. And then about six years ago, I moved to the state of Nevada where I currently am. I'm with the Division of Internal Audits. I was the financial manager there where I oversaw and still do oversee the compliance auditor section. They go out and perform mostly compliance, internal control reviews, ensuring agencies are following, adhering to state regulations and policies and procedures. And then took a position as executive branch auditor, which is where I'm at today. And I performed performance audits within, for the executive branch audit agencies. I've assisted with budget preparation for our agency. I've created risk plans for the compliance group and I've assisted our administrator with the risk plan for the audit side of it. I've also performed internal control training for all the executive branch agencies for, to ensure that they understand the importance of internal controls.
Great, thank you very much. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President, or Vice President. Ms. Hoover, thank you for being here. My question is, actually, it's a two-part question, so if it's okay with the board, I'll ask the first part, give you a chance to respond, and when you're done, then I'll ask the second part. So the first part, what is the depth of your performance and financial audit experience?
Financial audit experience, I'm going to go backwards with that, is really only when I worked for the CPA firm. The Division of Internal Audits does not perform any type of financial auditing for the state. We only perform performance auditing. And so that's, and we perform, we follow the Institute of Internal Auditors guidelines.
Thank you. And part two of my question, please give two examples of the most impactful audit findings you have produced and the ultimate outcome of implementation.
I do have an IT background, so I did do two, I performed two IT-related audits and I would say that those were probably the most impactful audit findings or reports that I had. The first one, the state enterprise IT department does not have complete authority over all the IT occurrences that happen at the state. And so, but one of the things that they're required to do is review any investment requests over $50,000. It goes through them, they ensure that it's not going to be detrimental to the network if it's going to attach that or that it's the best use of funds. When we started to do the audit, we realized that the process was there, but it was a rubber stamp. It was one individual who was reviewing, supposed to be reviewing all these requests that come in from all agencies. And so the individual did not have time to adequately review it, so they were just, he would rubber stamp it, send it on. So in our audit recommendations, we suggested, or we recommended that he be more the facilitator and that he would send it off to the experts within the enterprise IT department to ensure that those, that whatever was being requested was being reviewed by the expert in that environment. One of our requirements is to do a follow-up within six months of the report being issued. And prior to the six months being, our six-month follow-up, the enterprise IT department had submitted their changes to us. They had completely redone all of their policies and procedures and processes to ensure that it was much more useful to the state. The second one was over IT governance. And again, the enterprise IT department does not have final say over everything. But we started looking at a much higher level and realized that there were areas such as network software that was, there was a disparity in what all the agencies were using. So one of our recommendations was to ensure that antivirus software, backup data software and disaster recovery software were all going to be used the same across the board. So if there were any issues, agencies and enterprise IT could go out and assist them. And so they are working on that. But within that particular audit, the largest recommendation was to review with agencies what the cost and what the cost benefit would be to consolidate all the data centers, little data closets, all the little items that everybody had out everywhere and move them into the switch facilities that are, that have moved into Reno and Las Vegas. Since we were doing it, the audit over enterprise IT only, we could only really look at their situation. We worked with them at a very high level and we came, our recommendation was if they were able to consolidate everything, we, they, the state could have a savings of up to $27 million. And so they are actually working right now with the agencies on getting a cost benefit in place and having them look at how they can move their equipment into the switch.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Lori. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And my question is, what is your managerial experience and what is your management style?
I have managed people for probably the past 20 years, anywhere from one to up to eight or nine people at any given time. I, my management style is macro manager. I like to give them, my employees, the ability to do their job with minimal supervision. I want them to be able to learn, get that hands-on experience and be able to grow professionally through that.
Since you consider yourself to be the best candidate for the job?
I am a facilitator. I enjoy bringing people together to try to come up with the best reasonable solution, recommendation to any issue. I did that a lot when I was Gaming Systems Product Manager in the casino environment. I had to herd 15 different casinos together. And so I, I like to look at situations and say, okay, how can I help, how can I make a impact on this with helping, with getting people together and coming with that recommendation? I'm a good communicator. I like to, I will listen to people's different viewpoints. Everybody comes to the table with a different thought process and I want to hear what they have to say because I learn things that way. But I do believe that I can communicate with them and try to get internal audits views across to them. And I'm a positive leader. My, my, my team has always enjoyed me being their supervisor and I enjoy trying to train people and oversee them and see them grow.
It might turn. Again, thank you for being here. You're like, oh, sorry. Thank you for being here. I have been in that chair in front of the board and I know it's nerve-wracking and so on, but you're, but you're doing fine. So thank you for being here. My question is, is one, the district has made just an extra effort in terms of our commitment to equity and diversity. What, what a specific experience have you had that demonstrate, or that has demonstrated your commitment to equity and diversity? And it's okay if there's none, that's okay.
I'm not sure, when you say that, as in, like, hiring individuals that are the best for the job, no matter what their gender or ethnicity is? I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
No, just, just as, do you have, have you had any, any opportunity to be involved in anything that has enhanced equity and diversity in any of the places that you've worked? And you can describe it in any way you want to.
I, I'm going to have to say no, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Hi, Lori, and I have your last question, which is actually more about asking you if you have any questions for us. So what questions do you have for us as a board?
The question I like to ask, because internal audit is not always embraced as, you know, we're out there to help everybody, so how is internal audit perceived in Washoe County District, School District, excuse me?
Well, I can say how it's perceived by us as board members and my sense is that it's perceived very, very positively and appreciatively for the work that the internal audit department does, primarily because of our responsibility to be fiduciarily responsible and as efficient as possible. So we view the internal audit department as extremely important, at least I'm, I don't know if I can speak for my colleagues, I think I can in saying that. And, and I think that the, the way that I have observed the presentations by internal audit that have come before us, along with staff, along with the department's staff that have, that have been in the departments audited, has seemed very collaborative and very helpful to those departments. So I perceive it to be a positive relationship. Others may have other comments.
Thank you, trustee Frankel. I would just agree with what trustee Frankel said. I don't have anything to add. Any other trustees?
That's all I have.
Great. Well, thank you so much again, taking the time to be here today and appreciate your thoughtful answers to the questions.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome, Mr. Starkey.
Thank you.
Appreciate your being here today and taking the time.
Oh, thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We each have a question for you and so we'll kind of go around and I will start us off.
Okay, great.
If you could, please briefly review your job experience and try to keep it to about three or four minutes.
Okay, no problem. I'll just go to the jobs that are related to this current position, if that's okay. After graduating UNLV with an accounting degree, I took a position at the Nevada Gaming Control Board as a, as an auditor. We did a lot of revenue audits, basically for state gaming revenue, oversaw that. I was there for eight years. I was basically leading most of our out-of-town audits up in the northern part of the state, Lake Tahoe, or some of our bigger properties, Lake Tahoe and in the eastern section, Elko. I led teams, four or five auditors, professional staff on those projects, and I was responsible for getting those audits started, completed, and presented to the board on a timely basis. And I, after being there for, well, also in that position, I worked about two years. We called it our R and D, Division R and D Unit, kind of like an IT process. And for two years there, I oversaw basically computerized gaming systems that were sold and offered for sale within the state to review those systems for auditability and for compliance with various state regulations, eventually recommending them for approval or sale within the state. And then after being there, I moved on to the Nevada Division of Internal Audits. I was there, I think it was about five years. In that position, we were taking, performing audits at the direction of the governor, the governor's office and the Executive Branch Audit Committee. Those audits were mainly performance audits, like operational audits for efficiency effectiveness type evaluations. Then I moved on, after spending a few years there, I had the opportunity to go to law school, so I was, took it and enjoyed it, loved it and finished that. And when I got done with, with that schooling, I took a position with the Solano County, as the internal audit manager for Solano County. So for that county, I oversee basically the audit activities for the entire county. And we do financial statement audits, we do performance audits, we do compliance audits, all kinds of, just contract review audits, a little bit of everything. In that position, I'm responsible for, I created a, I called it countywide risk assessment tool because we didn't have a mechanism when I took the position of selecting audits. It was kind of a haphazard approach. And so it seemed like certain departments were getting, let's say, picked on a lot. So with the risk assessment tool, we can target more on, on risk and create our audit plan in that mechanism. I think it's a fair, broader and more assurance for the board of supervisors. I supervise four professional staff there, responsible for my division's budget, keeping that in line, hiring, training, sometimes promoting, which is nice, those type of activities. And at the end of the day, when we finish our audit reports, they're presented to the county board of supervisors for their acceptance or, or not acceptance, usually, hopefully, and comment. And that's my job experience.
Great, thank you so much. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I have a two-part question. So, Mr. Starkey, again, thank you for being here. I'll ask the first part and then when you're done with that, then I'll answer, I'll say the second question.
Okay, fair.
So the first part is, what is the depth of your performance and financial audit experience?
Okay. The performance side, I've had, it's about five years in the Nevada Division of Internal Audits and at, in the Solano County, in my current position, it's been about four years now, so about nine years performing those type of functions. And it's programs, departments, divisions, the whole gamut of what I've, I've looked at with Division of Internal Audits, I mean, yeah, Nevada Division of Internal Audits, we looked at... do audits of various districts with, or political subdivisions of the county, cemetery districts, fire districts, water districts. We have a library district, which is attached to a school district, so it's kind of similar. Done a lot of those. We do our fair, we do an annual audit of the fairs, financial audit on that one. And we have another entity. It, it's called First Five Solano. It's a, a department in the county which accepts, which is funded basically off tobacco revenue. And they use that money to create programs for children from ages zero to five. And we do, basically, it's like a, like an audit you would get at the, in your CAFRA audit from your outside accountants. It's a similar audit, so you have, the financial statements are in there, and it reports on internal controls as well. So, I've done pretty much all of those.
Great. Thank you. And then, the second part of my question is, please give two examples of the most impactful audit findings you have produced and the ultimate outcome of implementation.
Okay. I can think, I'll give one from Nevada Division of Internal Audits. I did a project or an audit of, it was called the Hearings and Appeals Division. It was, basically, they adjudicate workers' compensation claims. And when, in the middle, during the audit, we were noticing that there was a lot of, was certain judges had more higher caseloads than others, or open cases. And other judges were resolving the cases faster than others, sometimes based upon difficulty of the cases, but there was also other reasons. And the biggest thing we found was that there were no, no performance measures at all for any of the judges. The judges were appointed, and as far as getting the cases resolved or through the system, there really wasn't much, for lack of a better word, oomph in, in going from, from start to finish. We thought with some performance measures in place, and management actually tracking the progress of the cases through the system, the open cases of the different judges, it would help the cases get completed and resolved more timely. That has huge effects on especially the injured, the injured workers that make their claims. And if the claims are just sitting there, they're kind of left in the wind without resolution on their, on their case. It also helps the state getting the cases resolved, and, and the insurance companies, and ultimately, the employers as well. At the, so, the recommendation, sorry, was basically to have management create performance measures and tracking mechanisms to monitor the activities of the judges under its purview. And from that, we were, we found that when the recommendation was fully implemented, that the caseloads for the various judges had dropped 30%. And so, open cases were not accumulating, instead, they were getting resolved quicker and faster, benefiting probably everybody in the system. The other one is, I'll go, is a recent one. It's kind of a, if you'll bear with me, a little bit of a story. In Solano County, we have a mail services unit that delivers interdepartmental mail amongst the different county locations with the various cities within the county. We were called in to look at the request for extra staff. They were saying they weren't meeting, they weren't able to deliver the mail properly or timely, and they were asking for all kind, for additional staffing. So, we watched the process, observed it, discussed, all, all kinds of discussions with people through the whole mechanism of the chain of delivering the county mail. Well, we, long story short, what we ended up finding, it wasn't that the department needed more staff or anything like that. It was county workers were introducing their personal packages into the stream of commerce, basically, within the county, their Amazon packages, running businesses. And so, the, the mail services group was having to deliver everyone's personal packages from here and there, and they were getting backed up. To say the least, when it comes to this time of year, the employees in that group were not too happy to be at work. They delivered bicycles. It was a little rough. And so, the recommendation was, we were able to show that if we pulled county employee mail and parcels out of the stream of, of mail delivery, we would not need to hire the additional staff. And the current workers would probably reduce, well, they did reduce sick leave and vacation leave and callouts during that time period. And so, the department was able to maintain current staffing, save money that way, and also kept, yeah. Sorry.
Great. Thank you.
It happens.
Dr. Feenster. I wanted to say thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Mrs. Starkey, for being here. We really appreciate you being here. My question is, what is your managerial experience and what is your management style?
Okay. Most of my management experience is with, towards the tail end of my gaming control board career, we are running the audits, the out-of-town audits, the major out-of-town audits. I would be assigned those four or five professional staff to manage and get through the, get through the audit. And then, in my current position, it's the, again, it's the four professional staff involved in, in our department. And it's about nine years of running audits, being responsible for the audits, getting properly completed and accomplished on time. And then, my style, I would say, is one of, it's not dictatorial in any way. I don't like, like that. I liked involvement of the staff. I like to hear from the staff, what their experiences are, what they would like to learn. If there's things they're not learning or experiencing that they want to experience, I would like to try to find ways to incorporate those type of projects. Audit is, you know, there is a finite set of, of projects, but we can do, like, financial statement audits if we have the ability, financial or performance or compliance. Some people prefer one over the other. And, you know, if it meets organizational objectives, try to keep people with, with what they're more comfortable with and what they prefer. And I, and I think my style is more of, of try to be a cohesive unit, a, a team. And, and I'd like to say, like, in my current position and hopefully going forward, is that internal audit is, would be more of a, like a teammate, not a adversary. It wouldn't be, I would hope, I try, I try not to have it that way, just more of as a, as a group to get organizational objectives accomplished and accountability with, with public funds is kind of the biggest. And thank you.
Trustee Mayor.
Thank you, Vice President Melina Raymond. Number four, list three reasons you consider yourself to be the best candidate for the job.
First, I would say I believe I have the, the education, the professional designation in for the, for the profession, from the profession, my CPA license, along with my accounting degree and my legal background in schooling, I think, provides a good combination of business acumen, along with, with knowing a lot of inner workings of how, especially like local government works. My legal knowledge gained from law school helped with that. The other, I'd say, another one, my experience for, with auditing, I've done a lot of it. I've done just about every type of audit that, that can be done. I enjoy it. And I like, like I said, I think in prior interviews, I put in the puzzle pieces together, and that's kind of what audits are in, in a lot of ways. And I, from my financial statement experience, performance experience, and my compliance audit type experience, I think the results of my audits and what come out of it are not fluffy type of recommendations to burden departments or units. They're more of ones that can be implemented and that have cost benefits to, to serve a purpose. And they're not just there to fill space. They're there to accomplish a task. And if they can be implemented, they're not, you know, so burdensome that the organization can't function. And finally, I think, the third, I think I, I bring, well, I guess, hopefully, this is true, my management style, I'm working with people. I, I, I think I can communicate what goes on business-wise and why audit is important and why the recommendations are, that are being proposed. There's a purpose behind them, and that they can be implemented at the lowest, at a lowest cost and still be effective for, for the government. I'd say those three.
Thank you so much, Kirk. I have the next question. Over here. Okay, over here. The district has made it just an extra effort to really work on the areas of equity and diversity, as we did with our students. And so, my question is, is asking, what experience do you have that will demonstrate, what specific experience do you have that will demonstrate your commitment to your prior involvement in, in any efforts in these areas of diversity and equity?
Okay. Good question. We have, within the county, we, there's a program, so when it's time to, different departments hire new staff, they reach out to say for different department heads and managers, would you like to sit on the panels and be part of this? This is what we're promoting. So, I got myself out there and going to the various departments to sit on those interview panels, propose questions that would help bring a bigger group into the fold. And I've sat on several of those and on the hiring panels for that process. And I think, I think hopefully it helps a little bit. That's basically my, thank you.
And I have your final question. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And my question is an easy one. What questions do you have for us as a board? So, I get to ask you what questions you have for us.
Okay. I guess the, what do you, where does the, the board see internal audit as fitting in in the structure as a whole? Is it kind of an offshoot that's, that's there? And, or is it more of, let's say, does the board look at internal audit as something that can be used as kind of a tool, as a, to inform the board in some manner?
I can answer that. I think, similar to the previously, I, I think the, the, we see that the board here, we see the internal audit department is extremely important to helping the entire organization and us with the decisions that we have to make and finding ways to streamline and be more efficient, which of course is our imperative as, as being responsible for taxpayer dollars. So, we appreciate and we see that as a very significant role. We work with the audit committee, and they develop the, the plan, which we approve in terms of the approach to the audits and what audits will, will be undertaken. So, that's generally how those audits come to us, but we find those to be extremely effective, and our relationship with the committee is very strong and with the department. So, we, we very much appreciate the work of the audit committee and need it.
Excellent.
And of the auditor, of the audit department.
Okay. That was my main question.
Anyone else have anything to add at this time? All right. Thank you again so much for being here and the time you've dedicated to this.
Thank you.
All right. Now, Emily is back with us to provide us a little more guidance.
Sure. So, now begins the deliberation process, where we will discuss the candidates and your thoughts on their responses and strengths and areas of opportunity.
If I may start, actually, if you could, and I know we have the job description, I wondered, though, if you could refresh at least my memory on kind of the role of the auditor in terms of reporting, to how that relationship differs between the audit committee and the Board of Trustees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I can. So, and I'll let David chime in, too, if he has anything that he would like to add. But the, so, the question was the relationship between reporting to the audit committee and reporting to the Board of Trustees. There is a dotted line, reporting relationship to the superintendent for administrative functions, day-to-day operations and that sort of thing. And the initial audit reports are presented to the audit committee, which are then kind of dissected, if you will, right? Questions are asked, and recommendations are made to move that information forward to the Board of Trustees. So, any other details?
Thank you. If there's any other questions at this time for...
Sorry, I'm still learning, too.
Yeah. So, thank you. Yes. David Leising, Chief of Staff, for the record. So, the audit committee works very closely with the chief auditor and advises, that the chair works very closely with the chief auditor and advises them. The audit committee is also responsible for putting together the draft evaluation, which then comes to the Board of Trustees for final approval as well.
The performance evaluation of the auditor.
The annual performance evaluation of the auditor. It's done by the, sorry, I'll be clear, done, the draft done by the audit committee then to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Trustee Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I don't know if it's appropriate here to ask this, but I'll ask and see what happens. That's when Neil looks up and, mhm. I would, I would love, because, you know, we do rely so much on the, on the audit committee, and Mr. Doyle is still here, the chairman, I would love to hear their take on both candidates. I mean, certainly, we know their recommendation, but I would like, now that we've had a chance to meet them a little bit, would that, is that appropriate to do, to ask their?
Sure.
Would you mind, Mr. Doyle? I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Talking me into talking, that's seriously enough.
Thank you so much.
For the record, Tom Doyle, Audit Committee Chairman. We, we did like both candidates, and it was somewhat of a tough decision, no question about that. The thing that we liked about Lori was that she had a lot more practical business experience because she had worked outside in the gaming industry. Plus, she had, they both actually worked for the, the state internal auditor group. So, they actually worked for the same organization for a while, and I believe she still does. We were a little concerned about the fact that, you know, he had moved on to being, to get a law degree, and worked in the law area for less than a year, then went back to being an internal auditor. Maybe if you wanted an auditor, and that might be good, it might be bad. But it, it caused a little bit of a concern there because he moved up in Solano County and all that, and not the geographic should matter. But it, you know, you look, you look at, you asked about commitments, and that could be an issue. But we thought both individuals were good. But the fact that, you know, Lori, I think, is more nervous in an interview than, than he is. And, you know, I thought she came across in our interviews probably better than she did today. But she's, she seemed very qualified, very easygoing, and we thought that she would do a good job because she's really got the expertise. And the expertise with IT and stuff like that was a fairly sophisticated level. We think Kirk is fine. He's, he's good. I think he would work well with the staff and all that. But our impression, at least my impression of Kirk was that, you know, he had all the basic, he had all the basic skills, but we weren't sure that he was going to be the leader and the manager that the school district needs. We saw that she's had a little bit more leadership role in what she's done. So, yeah, it's a close call. I'm not going to say anything against that about either candidates, but we ended up voting six, six-zero for her and all that. So, anyway, that's it. Anything else I can answer?
That was good for me, Tom. That's exactly what I wanted, was that, just those thoughts from your deliberation and so on. So, thank you.
Yeah. That's it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Emily. If we can go back to you and our process now.
Sure. So, committees work a little bit differently, right? Sometimes, the discussion just starts right away. People have thoughts about the candidates, and other times, it's helpful to have a prompt to begin that deliberation process. So, if you're comfortable, I will go ahead and ask the first question, and then I'm sure you guys will have rich discussion about the candidates. I think a great place to start is how you feel each candidate's skills and experience aligned to the qualifications outlined in the job description.
Trustee Frankel.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. I actually, I think, I mean, that's a, that's a helpful question. That's actually what I was doing earlier, was going, going back and forth to the job description. I guess my HR hat is showing, between the skills and qual, and expertise and qualifications and what I was hearing from them. It's interesting that, you know, Tom mentioned his, their sense of experience. I actually saw it a little bit differently. I actually saw, especially related to the question that Trustee Kelly asked, related to financial audits, which I know is the primary purpose of our audit department. And so, I saw that experience as, as particularly relevant, and that's an important part of this job description and an important part of their, each candidate's experience for us to evaluate. So, that, that's one of the things that stood out for me, was the difference in the experience in the area of financial audits. And that Kirk's experience was much greater, and Lori acknowledged that she had primarily worked on performance audits, which I know we don't necessarily have as our emphasis of our audit department here. So, that's one of the things that, that stood out for me. The other had to do with, and I, and I do sense that the, the emphasis on one area of work, be it IT or any particular area, I think it's probably, to me, I look toward, to a breadth of experience auditing... I actually saw, especially related to the question that trustee Kelly asked related to financial audits, which I know is the primary purpose of our audit department. And so I saw that experience as particularly relevant and that's an important part of this job description and an important part of their, each candidate's experience for us to evaluate. So that's one of the things that stood out for me was the difference in the experience in the area of financial audits. And that Kirk's experience was much greater and Lori acknowledged that she had primarily worked on performance audits, which I know we don't necessarily have as our emphasis of our audit department here. So that's one of the things that stood out for me. The other had to do with, and I do sense that the emphasis on one area of work, be it IT or any particular area, I think it's probably, to me, I look toward, to a breadth of experience auditing a variety of different departments and having worked at a county, I know that that's a variety of different departments. And we have a variety of different departments and various lines of business. So I was kind of looking at that as well. And again, kind of looking at the experience that they each had in auditing a wide variety of different agencies. And so that's kind of what I was looking at. And again, the, not that, I think Lori's experience is extremely strong in a couple of departments that are obviously very, have been very successful, I was just also looking for that breadth beyond just IT.
I don't have anything to add to that. I think that was pretty much my noting is, I think it's really comprehensive. I thought it was more comprehensive just because most of her years were on the IT side and I looked at the financial versus the performance as well, just those two things. I think they all have, as Mr. Doyle said, they all have a basic level, you know, that's necessary. So just, for me, it's just a matter of looking at, you know, whose experience fits best with what we're doing here from that. And I got, again, I got the impression just because it was so IT focused on her end, that he may have the edge there. I mean, they're close though, but in that particular one, he may have the edge there.
Trustee Mayor.
You know, in my evaluation of people, I look at management style and I think Lori has a better management style. She said that she was more of a participation management style and I kind of gave her the edge because of that, because that's what we really need is a team effort, not a one person effort. So that's what I've been looking at.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, it's never easy to interview before a panel, in this case, a public panel of elected officials. I mean, that's not, that's not an easy thing to do, but you know, our chief auditor will have to come before us often to just talk about audits that they've done and some of the findings that they've had and be able to field questions that the board might have. So I do think that it is important to have some comfort and confidence to get in front of a group and talk about the sort of things. And so I would give the nod in that case to Mr. Starkey who, you know, Ms. Hoover I thought did fine, she did good up here, but I thought that he just came across as, you know, pretty, pretty confident. And I think that if he had, if they both had audits that they had to present to the board, I mean, my sense is that he would be a little bit more comfortable bringing it to our attention and helping to lead whatever discussion it would, that would entail. So I kind of gave him a little bit of an edge on that one.
Dr. Taylor.
Oh, thank you, Madam Vice President. I think I would say, overall, when I look at the time, and I had a little bit of time to work with Ms. Ward who knew internal audit, like, you know, top to bottom, flip it over, all of that. And I also recognize that, you know, at times there were tough relationships, I think, I don't remember which one of our candidates talked, oh, I guess they both kind of talked about how no one's excited to see the internal auditor, they're coming. I mean, that's, that doesn't, usually doesn't mean you're having a good day. But I think, I like the way he talked about it a little bit more in terms of them being meaningful, not burden, burdensome. I think that there is an opportunity to bridge a little bit of gap that we didn't always have for various reasons from way back before any of us were on the board, probably. And the way that he discussed it in terms of, it gave me the idea that he can communicate more of the why behind the recommendations. And I think that extra step would be important just because of, just because of where we've come and water under the bridge and so on. I liked that about him, you know, I also liked that, I loved actually the risk assessment tool for how you decide, this is our audit plan, how do you decide which one comes up, is where is there the greatest risk? And it's a tool that's totally objective and that takes away some of that again, you know, past perceptions and people still feeling like they're being picked on and those kinds of things that we've had in the past. And I do think that, I think Paula's worked, Ms. Ward worked really hard to get away from some of that, but I think this, and particularly these last couple of years, but I think this goes a step further. If there is an objective tool that says this is why the plan is as it is, because that's where the risk is, not just because of it's, you haven't been audited for four years or whatever, or this is going on nationally, so let's take a look at it, let's look at where the risk is. And he also mentioned, he also mentioned the, you know, the stewardship over the public dollars and the, again, that's getting, getting a little bit more back to the why. Might be because of his experience working in a county, you know, which you're always in that, you're much more direct, you're much more directly in that line of fire, if you will. So that gave me a little more of a comfort zone in terms of the best, the best fit for us, based upon, based upon the original five questions and I don't need to talk about the diversity question.
Thank you. And I would actually have to agree, I think the things that stood out to me are many of the same that stood out to you about Mr. Starkey. I think when I think about the work of the internal auditor as a trustee, I obviously don't have the depth of knowledge as a member of the audit committee would on, on just kind of all of that work, but I can see it from the perspective of, you know, the team, you know, that he or she would be presenting to with the information. And I very much appreciated the idea of that being a team kind of role and, and not an adversarial role, and not to say that Ms. Hoover sees it that way, but she just didn't mention it in her interview and that really stood out to me, that kind of team, being part of the team. And I think, you know, talking about the managerial style, I really, I did like Ms. Hoover's answer about kind of the macro management, but I also liked Mr. Starkey kind of described a real collaborative environment, which I think, you know, as an employee, I appreciate that environment. I don't necessarily always want to, not to be totally left alone, I like the, you know, ability to really be part of a group and having that group kind of dynamic and conversation. So those stood out to me. And I, you know, I, it is not in any way to diminish the experience of either candidate, they are so well experienced and this is a very hard decision for sure for any group. Dr. Feumster.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I, I agree with what Dr. Taylor mentioned. I'd like to add to that by saying, I felt he was very solution oriented. And not only was he looking for solutions, he mentioned that he wanted to guarantee that the solutions were workable, that's the word I put down, that the solutions benefited the organization. I think that's very important. I love the way he was able to articulate the hearings and appeals court information because he sat back, observed, and he was looking to see what needed to be put in place. And he said, the judges needed performance measures. And not only would that help the states, but it would also help insurance companies. And so he came up with just lots of solutions. I love the mail system, realizing that, you know what, this is a personal thing here. And it was cute. But he's still looking at solutions and able to share them with employees to guarantee that, that the solutions worked. So he was also communicative, that was important to him. And I did like when he said, I enjoy auditing. I think that's so important to hear that because, you know, we think of auditing and just, as you said, Vice President, it's just something that we don't really know about, but we kind of think off the top of our heads, oh, it's something that's boring. But he was able to communicate that, wow, it's, you know, it's, I enjoy it. And he bragged about the fact that he has the business acumen to do it. And he did talk about teamwork, he did talk about teamwork, so he said, you know, I like to hear from my staff and incorporate their ideas and I think that's very important. But they both did that, so I do see that in both candidates.
Thank you, Dr. Feumster. Well, I think we're probably ready to entertain a motion, but I did, would like to just say first that I am very sorry that this process was not communicated the way it should have been with the audit committee. I, you know, I think for me personally as a trustee, again, and not speaking for any of my fellow trustees, but I saw this as a very important decision because of the impact it does have on myself as a trustee and the fact that this is one of the two employees. And, and so I don't see this decision, whichever way it goes, as any commentary on the importance and role of the audit committee or the incredible amount of hard work that they do for us all the time and especially in this case. But I, I am very grateful that we did have the opportunity to hear from both candidates and, and believe it is an important part of our role as trustees and, and am glad to hear that there will be some work done around the process for the future. Dr. Taylor.
Yes, Madam Vice President, I would like to make a motion. Just one thing I do want to say before, before I continue, just out of fairness to Ms. Hoover, on the diversity question, she just hadn't had the experience, you know, that's all and that's something that we're focused on. I love that he said, asking questions that widen the pool, because you just want a better pool, you're still going to pick the best person, but it does start with the pool. But just out of fairness to her, I mean, that's nobody's fault, it just happened that way. I think she's a stellar candidate, I do, I really do. That being said, I do think that Mr. Starkey is the better fit for where we are moving forward. And I'd like to make a motion that we hire Kirk R. Starkey, JDCPA, to be our chief internal auditor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment at this time?
I'm being told that, I'm sorry, that I need to say, I move that the Board of Trustees approves the selection of Kirk Starkey for the position of chief auditor and directs the superintendent to make an offer of employment.
All right.
Excuse me, thank you.
Trustee Mayor.
Yes, I'm going to vote against this motion, basically because I feel, when you put a committee together, you put them together to look at something and they take the time and then they come up with a suggestion and it really is upsetting. I've been where the NIAA, two and a half years on a committee and didn't accept their recommendations. I just feel that six to nothing is a pretty good recommendation to have the audit committee unanimous, so I'm going to vote no for that reason.
Thank you. We'll take a vote, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, the motion is passed in favor of Mr. Starkey as the internal auditor. Thank you again. Shall we take a break at this time or do we want to move forward? Okay, we'll take a, we'll take a 15-minute break, be back here at 3:40. I can't see the clock very well. All right, everyone, we are back. Call the meeting back to order. And we are on agenda item 3.02, discussion impossible, no, sorry. There it is. Presentation and information presented to the Board of Trustees regarding the middle school, sixth through eighth grade configuration beginning in the 2019-20 school year, as well as information on fifth grade activities for those elementary schools that will have fifth grade as their highest grade level. And before us to present is a panel of people. I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon, Vice President Melina Raymond, Superintendent Davis, members of the board, Kristen McNeil, Deputy Superintendent for the School District, and with me, we have Mr. Joe Ernst, our Area Three Superintendent, and we also have Ms. Megan Downs, our Communications Manager. So today we are doing an exciting presentation for you all. We are going to be presenting you some information on our new grade configuration for our middle schools. So we'll be going through a PowerPoint and some of the, let me make sure that we are, are we rocking and rolling here, JJ?
Yes.
There we go, okay. So we're going to go through several different types of information for you all today. We would love to have your questions at the end of the presentation, but any time is fine. So we're going to present you the future and the present state of our middle schools. We're going to go over our communication plan. We'll take a look at some of the different work sessions that we've had with our middle school principals and also department leaders. We'll take a look at what the vision is for our middle schools going into next year and then we'll talk a little bit. One of our trustees had asked for some information regarding, once the sixth grade goes up to middle school, what are some of those activities that our elementary schools will be doing for our fifth graders?
Hello, Vice President Raymond, Superintendent Davis, fellow trustees. My name is Joe Ernst, there is Superintendent. And what we wanted to do is just kind of give you an overview of where we have middle schools with some sixth graders in the 1819 currently. Okay. Anyhow, I think that should read 1718, so my apologies. So all sixth graders that are attending middle school right now are at Incline, Trainer, DePoli and Cold Springs. We have some sixth grade magnet programs and those are over at Swope, Pine and Mendive. So some of our sixth graders attend those middle schools. We also have some sixth grade students from Feter Elementary Schools, a small pocket in each of these instances that go to O'Brien, Billinghurst, Clayton and Dilworth. Oh, I'm, okay, mixing up my 1819s and my 1718s, pardon me. All right, so now we'll move forward now to 1920. Middle schools next year that will have, that will have sixth grade in middle school. We're excited about kind of the momentum overall of sixth grades joining our middle schools. And we'll speak to some of those real advantages that we see a little later in the presentation. But as we look into next year, 12 of our 16 middle schools will have all of the sixth graders at the school. Area one, Incline, area two, DePoli, Trainer, Desert Skies, Cold Springs, area three, Shaw, Sky Ranch, Mendive, area four, Billinghurst, Dilworth, Clayton and Sparks. And so you can see we're really gaining a lot of momentum in terms of getting our sixth graders into middle schools. Okay, and then as we kind of look forward beyond, middle schools without sixth grade in 1920, those schools would include Vaughn, Swope, O'Brien and Pine, so four of our middle schools. What we're excited about is the projection with the new middle school out at Arrow Creek, some structural additions that we're looking at at Swope and O'Brien, and then some continued rezoning that would allow all middle schools to be sixth through eighth grade with the intention of that happening by 2022, 2023.
Great, so Vice President Raymond, Superintendent Davis and trustees, Megan Downs, Communications Manager. So a lot of our communications for this are luckily already in play. We've started with ample communications from schools and the district to families with sixth grade students that will be attending middle school in 1920. So a variety of letters have already gone out detailing what the scenarios will be for each of those students next year. Middle school principals are also visiting elementary schools to discuss and prepare students and families, as well as informational meetings will be held at middle schools for families with incoming sixth grade students. Communications for this is embedded throughout the process. We're creating tools to help answer those questions, to help guide the principals through the process, PowerPoints. We're building a website that will launch December 1st, social media, videos, talking points, all that's going to be available. And then also a variety of FAQs for those more specific scenarios such as GT, special education, those sorts of things where there might be more specific questions. That's all I have.
Madam Vice President?
Dr. Taylor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Megan. It's great to have all that pre-work done and help them transition. Are we able to do something for those targeted populations? I'm thinking specifically about English language families, I mean, about those that English language learners, those families, and maybe those, those students if we need to do extra things for those who may be special.
Yeah, and for instance, all of our, all of our items have already been translated, which is a good start, but yeah, we can weave that in as we go and perhaps make some more targeted meetings during the process, which could help special student populations as well.
So because there's so many moving parts, when you take an entire grade level and you shift it up into different configurations, we wanted to make sure that our principals, our middle school principals and district departments actually were involved with the conversation. So we've had already, on October 22nd, we had a very large meeting in our West Conference Room with over 40 participants, many middle school principals, we had department heads, and what we really talked about is what is a middle school? So typically, we've had 7th and 8th grade, so what does it look like on a daily basis with 6th, 7th, and 8th grade? And it was great because we were able to kind of lean on the expertise of those middle school principals that actually have 6th, 7th, and 8th grade right now in their buildings, and also then take a look at, so where are we not seeing some of these gaps from principals that have the 7th and 8th grade? So we have one of those work sessions already on October 22nd. We then went to our, all of our middle school principals at a Lead Teach Learn meeting, an LTL meeting, and Mr. Ernst did a great presentation with all of our middle school principals. We'll then come back on December 17th with that larger group, invite all the middle schools. This time, we'll hold it actually at DePoli Middle School, so we can actually do some walkthroughs, and then have those, those discussions again. So for example, some of the things that, that may not have been thought of, so how do you handle athletics within a 6th, 7th, and 8th grade? How do you handle PE? How do you handle music? So those are some of the discussions that are still ongoing. We can't, we don't have answers for you today on what that's going to look like. A lot of those are budgetary type discussions, and so we still need to kind of look at the numbers and where those see fit. Another type of issue are lunches. Do we have one lunch, two lunches? What does it look like within the day? And then also your master schedule. When you're moving a block of 6th graders in, what does that look like? And the principals really want to have an inclusive feeling for their middle schools, that it's not just 6th grade kind of off into the, you know, like a hallway, that it actually is a team environment, so that 6th, 7th, and 8th grade is actually one team. And there is a picture actually of our work session. Okay, so I will start this, this slide. So the 6th through 8th grade configuration model was actually implemented with Kendall DePoli Middle School when that opened up in 2009. The education specifications using this model were approved by the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, and the design was implemented in the building of that school. The middle school education specifications were updated and approved by the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees for the design and building of our new middle schools, Desert Sky and Sky Ranch, which you'll be hearing from later on, using the 6th through 8th grade configuration model. In addition, this model that changes elementary school to a kindergarten or pre-kindergarten 5th grade configuration, and helps to alleviate overcrowding, as you know, for our young learners. With the building of the new middle school in Arrow Creek area, Washoe County School District will continue our efforts to move more middle school students to the 6th grade configuration. And now Mr. Ernst is kind of going to go through a little bit and take a look at what that looks like step by step.
So when we look at some of the potential advantages in 6th grade, having 6th grade in middle school, principals will unanimously talk about the benefits of social emotional learning. Just outside, we see some data in the hallways there regarding our middle school behavioral data and what have you. When middle schools discuss this, they really talk about the ability to build relationships with students for three years' time, as opposed to two years, and turning over half of that population of students each year. And so to that, really feel that we'll be able to make some substantial gains around the climate and culture in a building to better support 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students around some of those unique social emotional needs that they have. When we look at 6th grade in middle school, we're also proceeding in these task force meetings and in these conversations with principals around our work as a district towards providing the most equitable practices. And so that is an ongoing conversation as we look at this, and there's some unique circumstances when comparing 6th grade at elementary school, where we're going to eventually phase out, but in the interim, how will we handle some of those steps? And some, some of that is some continued ongoing conversation. When they talk about some of the advantage of the, of the master scheduling, Dr. McNeil just spoke about really bringing 6th grade into the entirety of the school, while there has been a lot of thought around how to best consider the instructional schedule to meet 6th grade students' needs in middle school, while again, getting them prepared for 7th and 8th grade. And so different ideas around what the teaming would look like to better support 6th grade students in middle school, eventually phasing towards more staff members involved in the teaming in 7th and 8th. So there's been a lot of conversation around that. Of course, we know with middle school, the content licensure and the content instruction that can occur, with folks having certifications in the various subject matter as a benefit of it. And then when we're also looking at it, as Dr. McNeil talked about, and as we work towards some decisions moving forward, those revolve around middle school programming, including the arts, as, as she mentioned, with music, and how that will look in our middle schools with 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, as well as some of those sports activities, and what that will include. And having had a chance to sit on the task force and be a part of leading our middle school principals, their input is invaluable and really helps deepen the collective thinking and is working with them as we really develop this longer-term mission, or this longer-term vision for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade in middle school.
Trustee Frankel.
Yeah, I, thank you, Joe, and all of you. One of the things, and I'm doing this particularly on this slide, we just actually spent some time at a middle school, trustee Raymond and I, and I, and I understand you're trying to do more of an integrated look at 6th, 7th, and 8th, and I know my daughter was in the 2009 class at DePoli Middle School, and I know all of us parents of 6th graders were a little concerned, not, the academic benefits were very clear. I think it was the social benefits, the social issues that we were concerned about, because there's a huge difference, as I'm saying this to you, and you all know this, between 6th graders and 8th graders, and I think, so that's one of the things I wanted to just hear a little bit more, as you're talking about integrating them more and not having them off in their own wing, which is what, what we did at DePoli. I'm just kind of wondering how you're, you're thinking about that within the context of the social emotional learning and climate and culture conversations, because we do a lot of great work with them, but middle school is tough, and we've heard that today. Middle school is tough, and behaviors of students are difficult, and so I think that 6th graders are significantly younger than 8th graders, and I think that, that's just the thing I'm constantly thinking about, is what, how do we, we encourage them to be part of the school at the same time, not necessarily drop them into that harder environment of middle, middle school so quickly? So I just wanted to hear some more thoughts on that.
Sure, sure. So to kind of elaborate a little bit along those lines, and coming back to the scheduling and the teaming aspect, so in a lot of situations, what we saw in middle school is we saw that there were some 6th grade students there. Say Mendive, for example, they have a pocket of about 30 students there. In that context, or in that school, there, there may be some real benefits to having those 6th graders in a more sheltered environment. As we look now to incorporating all 6th graders, and so now being 200 and 300 6th grade students in middle school, some of the ideas around that social emotional support and making sure that there is some separation in looking 6th and 8th graders is around the, the concept of teaming. So for example, a lot of principals have talked about, in their 7, 8 teaming configurations, there's four teachers. We know in elementary school, where a lot of our 6th graders have been, there are real benefits to the teacher-student relationship. They have them for six hours a day, and they really get to know each other well. So a lot of early conversation has revolved around reducing the 6th grade team to two teachers. Therefore, they'll be working with the kids for more extended periods of time, have deeper relationships with the kids, and again, kind of transitioning to the following year, now you'll have four teachers on that team. So that's just kind of a, one small example of some of the thought that's being put as far as supporting that, that 6th grade student in middle school.
And then I'll just add very, very quickly, you know, there's a lot of anxiety as you move, you know, into a middle school. You know, we have the, we have the lockers, we've got, you know, buses, transportation, there's, it's, it's just a big deal. It's a big deal for our kids, and it's a huge deal for our parents as well. So our middle school principals have done an outstanding job doing outreach, outreach, out, outreach, outreach efforts to our parents to make sure that they feel comfortable. And there, you know, there are 6th graders coming into there, so they've done a great job in making sure that our parents, and I think trustee mayor and, and trustee Feimster, you all were at Shaw Middle School a couple of weeks ago, and Mike Gifford, the principal there, actually did a great job as far as some of those conversations with what he is doing to outreach to the elementary schools, and that's just one example of what our middle schools are doing.
Trustee Mayor.
You know, I'm glad to see your planning, because middle school with 6th, 7th, and 8th is the best way to go for everybody included, including a father. I didn't have any trouble with my kids. My mother, she had a heart attack. My mother, my kid's grandmother, she, oh. Two weeks into the school year, my mother was the biggest supporter ever. It was just they had to have that time. My kids, man, they could hardly wait to go to 6th grade, but the parents, and I saw at Clayton, when I taught there, the parents that were the most vocal about, oh, my kid, he's going to be at the Bus Stop, became our biggest supporters, especially from around Elm Crest and that area, the ones that had to walk to school and stuff. They formed parent helping hands in the window, and when Clayton took a survey, never was the hot hand used. Kids didn't go to the helping hand. And so it really is, and I'm glad that you just said that, educating the parents, because everything is going to be so much better to have a PE program, an intermural program, clubs, everything that you can't offer with three 6th grade teachers in an elementary school. You're lucky to have one intermediate program, kickball or something. Here, they got all kinds, and it's academic, social, it's better for them. And it's better for the staff, because they get to know them for three years. They see them as, as young kids coming in, and they see them as a high school's going out, and in the middle, because with two years, they get them, oh, oh. Second year, oh, where, you're going to this, oh, you're going to that high school, you're going to AACT. They spend half the year planning where they're going the next year. So you really don't get a full three years. This way, they get them for three years, they can institute growth problem, programs, and they can overcome problems, they'll have more counselors, they'll have social workers, they'll have music programs. I can go on and on what middle school really benefits the community. It's the only way, and I'm glad to see you having all these workshops, because as my middle school experiences are 20 years ago, so, you know, but these guys that were sitting there, they're getting, they're looking like me in that picture, they're getting a politically correct haircut, and so they're the ones that know. And when they get work in these groups and they say, this will work, that won't work, listen to them, because they're there and they know it. And, and the principal from Shaw, she comes over to Sky Ranch, can bring a wealth of knowledge to that new middle school, and I just think it's wonderful. I just am thrilled to death that you guys are planning for this, it's great.
So one of the, one of the things that we also wanted to consider in this move was the 5th grade experience, and now that 5th graders, this is going to be their highest level at the elementary school. One of the special aspects of an elementary school is that culminating year, some of the special activities that occur with that, a 6th grade promotion to middle school, a three or four-day field trip, overnight field trip. And principals have really tuned into that, and so what we did is we conducted a survey with our elementary school principals, whose 6th graders will be going to middle school, and unanimously, they're all going to provide their 5th graders with some of those culminating experiences. So, there's, there's some range as far as how they're going to do that, doing 5th and 6th together in some situations, 5th separate, 6th separate, additional field trips for the 5th grade and what have you, but they've all been well aware of working to provide that real special culminating experience at the end of the elementary school years. So that, that talked a little bit about that, and really, as far as them informing families, they are really working with families right now. Obviously, if we're going on an overnight field trip for three days, the planning is taking place now, and families are informed of, okay, we're really going to honor these 5th graders this year, because we know they're going on to 6th grade and middle school next year. And so principals have been very thoughtful in that regard.
And this, you know, obviously, this is a transition year for some of our 6th graders and our 5th graders, so some of our schools are going to be doing 5th and 6th grade type of celebrations to get the, the 5th graders ready for what it, what that looks like. But, you know, rest assured that our, our principals are on it with their families, and those conversations are happening. And just as, you know, as a point, over two-thirds of our elementary schools, just starting next year, a little over 41 of our elementary schools will actually be a pre-K, K5 model. So that's substantial, and then in the following couple of years, the hope is, is to transition all of the 6th grades to the middle schools. And then finally, in conclusion, we just really kind of wanted for the public's knowledge to do the clarification as around 6th grade configuration versus rezoning. You know, we had the three middle schools, the three schools opening for next year, two middle and one elementary school, and so that predicated some rezoning, and so we actually have a great, you know, rezoning committee. They've done a tremendous amount of work, but that's very separate and distinct from the new grade configuration on the roll-up, and so really what this slide is showing is just the difference between those. And with that, any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time? I have one possibly predictable question. So is right now the, still the starting date, or the opening date for Swope to accept 6th graders fall 2020? Or is it the 2022 date?
I believe it's the fall of 2022.
2022, okay.
And, and I can check and, and send that to you. I believe that's what it is, is for right now.
Okay. And I do, I'll just add to what trustee Frankel said, and I think as a anxious, panicky parent, I, I like that idea of sort of the 6th grade being a year of transition and not just this sharp kind of contrast from being a 5th grader in an elementary school to a, a 6th grader in a middle school setting with transitions, and, and not so much, I guess, that, I don't think that they can handle it age-wise, but we did hear a little today from this group of middle schoolers that it, that is a big change, just 6th to 7th grade, and, and I think, you know, whether it's 5th to 6th or 6th to 7th, that having sort of a way to ease them into the experience a little bit might help, you know, make it a little less shocking. But I also heard, I think, that you don't want to be, stand out as being, you know, different and younger and separate, and so I think, I like that it's a, sort of a hybrid. And so I think, I like that it's a sort of a hybrid. I think that's smart, and I'm looking forward to seeing it. And lastly, just to add that at that data summit, I was in a session with the charts out there that highlighted middle school. And it was striking to me that when you look on those student climate surveys, sixth graders that are in middle schools have a much higher climate rating and feel safer, feel happier in school than even sixth graders in elementary school do, and definitely higher than seventh and eighth graders do. And I'm just really excited and curious to see in the future how that might change the climate of seventh and eighth graders that are in a sixth, seventh, eighth situation where they've done three years. And I hope that we do see some of that, you know, work around the team and community that they do feel better about, you know, being in middle school.
Trustee Frankel.
And thank you, Vice President Raymond. And I just wanted to follow up and say that I probably should have reiterated that within two weeks of my daughter starting at DePulley, I was okay with it too. And I am a walking example of a parent who was concerned, who was extremely thrilled with the fact that my daughter had that experience. And the model that you described was in fact the model that was used at DePulley with the move to, you know, you had one homeroom teacher in elementary school, and then they had two. And that was a great way to transition into the seventh and eighth grade. So I am a huge proponent of this, and I think it's fabulous. And I know we'll do everything we can, as was done for them, to transition them with support that they need. So thank you.
Superintendent Davis?
I just want to thank the team. We are doing amazing things and moving in the direction of the vision. And sometimes it takes a little time, we have to communicate these things out so everybody's on the same page. And we've had a few bumps in the road, but our goal is to be very transparent with our families about this process, transparent to our employees about this process, and where we're going for the future of the district with building this sixth, seventh, eighth grade model, which I'm a believer in for a lot of reasons, especially since middle school, the way we have it now. Most of the kids only spend two years there, and so it's hard to build those relationships as we do the work around social emotional learning. So this is going to give our kids an opportunity and those teachers to build some stronger relationships as we try to grow this system to sustain on where we want our kids to go on the pathway. So thank you, team.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are moving on to Agenda Item 3.03, Presentation and Discussion on Emergency Communications: Printed Guide and Website Alerts for Information and Discussion Only. And I'll just restate again that President Simon Holland is on jury duty today and is not able to be here possibly for the next four, four or five days.
About 45.
About 45. We miss her, but in her place, I am leading today's meeting, so. And we are now joined by our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer Irene Payne, Megan Downs, Communication Manager, and Charles Rahn, the Social Media Specialist. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. It's a pleasure to be in front of you, Vice President Raymond, Trustee Superintendent Davis, to talk to you today about communications between the school district and our families at times of emergency. As a team, we are involved in the school district's emergency response team. And we work with the local crisis communication, communicators, council. And because of the work that we do, not just within the school district but within the county, every member of the communications team has as a minimum a FEMA certification in incident command systems. So that means we could really go and work in an emergency anywhere in the country because it's standardized. And we have done that. We have worked with the county, we've been at the Regional EOC at their Joint Information Center at times of countywide emergencies. And I mention this because the work that we do around communications means that we are constantly learning and striving to improve what we do. As we all know, we always learn in everything that we do, and that is a focus for us too. Earlier this year, we worked with the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission around a safety forum. And we've done this for a number of years, and it's really helpful to us because once again, it's a great opportunity for us to listen and to get some very meaningful feedback from our families. And that's really important, that we hear from staff, we hear from our families about their priorities, their preferences, and their concerns about how we as a school district communicate when they most need communications, which is when there is an emergency and students are involved. So with that kind of setting the scene, I'm going to hand over to my colleagues here, Megan Downs, Communications Manager, and Charles Rahn, Social Media Specialists. So over to you two.
Hello again. So again, I'm going to just discuss a little bit more about the safety forums. You know, for those of you who haven't had an opportunity to attend one, it's hosted by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, and Communications Department takes a big partnership in that to make that event a reality and make sure that all of our families know that that's happening and can provide their input. Community members rotate tables to hold discussions on a variety of safety topics. In this event, Charles and I also facilitate a discussion on emergency communications. And it provides us with a unique listening opportunity. We learn from staff, parents, families, and community members about their experiences in real emergencies that we've had, what's worked well for them, and what hasn't. And in the last two years, these conversations have really improved and informed our daily practices. They've provided us with a better understanding of the parent experience, and they've revealed some perspectives that we wouldn't really have considered otherwise. So a couple of interesting examples that have informed our practices include texting. It seems very obvious, but parents respond to texts, they look at them immediately. Whereas if we're always relying on our connected phone calls, they may not pick up, they may be in a work situation or something where they can't immediately respond. So now during emergencies, texting is always a tool that we employ. Families don't always understand the terms that we use as a district to describe emergencies. Good example would be a code yellow lockdown. That can be really scary and intimidating to families who don't understand that terminology. So, by the way, it's a precautionary measure that just means a school is in a heightened sense of security if there's police activity in the area or something like that. But we seek ways to define what that is to parents, to talk about it in other terms so it becomes less intimidating. You know, and this may seem obvious, too, but school safety has never been more at the top of mind for our families. And we are continually adjusting to these needs and ensuring that we do not allow an information vacuum to form. There's a phrase that we like to use in emergency communications that until the emotions are dealt with, the facts don't matter. And so we strive to, yeah, and we deal with this daily, but we strive to manage those emotions, explain the expectations, and provide clear facts when available. So we're going to talk a little bit more about the specific products and practices that have been produced as a result of these forums. The first is an emergency communications guide, which JJ will display maybe. Okay. All right. I have it here, but it is attached in your board docs. And really, this was developed in conjunction with the communications team, school police, emergency manager, board services, and the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. And it's a printed guide that can be used by schools at additional safety forums or any other district event, and will of course be shared on our website. It includes information on emergency preparedness, emergency drills, student release and family reunification, reporting possible threats, and defines the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. We will ensure that this is available for principals to make use at back-to-school nights or other appropriate events, and we'll of course update this as district policies change. That's one of our great tools that have come to fruition, and Charles is going to talk about some of the others.
Charles Rahn, Office of Communications, Community Engagement for the record. Give me just a minute here, get my computer up here. So just to beat a little more on the drum of these forums are very handy for us. Some of the information that we have brought in from families and community members has been so helpful. We've presented it at conferences when we talk about school safety and communications. It's been huge. So I want to highlight some of our internal practices and things that have changed based on feedback. One of them is a more timely and persistent use of the Connect Ed system with our parents during an emergency situation. If a student is in a code red lockdown, for example, we have time limits on when the first contact needs to be made with parents to make sure that there's not this kind of hang time, this, you're getting text messages from the school, and it's very scary, and you're not getting, you're not hearing from officials. So we're taking a lot of steps to make sure that that's cut to a minimum. Another thing is that we are maintaining persistent contact with regular updates throughout the time. So it's not just, hey, something's wrong, we'll talk to you later. You know, we need to continuously be talking to people. Another thing is we're supplying schools with more prepared messaging that's based on best practices and things we've learned so that they can write scripts or talk to parents in ways that we know both communicate what's going on, help provide closure, a lot of different things that we think we're able to support schools in a way that we really haven't before because we know what to say. Another one is education efforts. So working with a lot of our media partners to, for example, we just do winter weather preparation event. These are things where we're just kind of showing off, this is how we deal with things. Making new videos, we did a really well-received video this spring about reporting rumors with school police that's worked out well. And then continuing to just kind of work with schools on what they can say with parents and students to help out in these situations. So one thing that we really learned has been a shortcoming in efforts in the past has been closure. You might receive a phone call at the end of the day saying, hey, by the way, we had a code yellow lockdown at school today. Everything's fine. We find that isn't really enough information, generally speaking. It can, you can raise more questions than you answer. And for that reason, we've been, pardon me, we've been really working on the persistent communication part. A lot of that practice was influenced by privacy concerns in the past, but we looked at it and kind of said, we can mitigate this without having to sacrifice any privacy. So that's a good part about it. So we talked about persistent communications, and I do want to jump into this webpage that we have just added. Now, the point of this is that parents need to be able to simply access critical information, know where to get the update, when they'll get their next update, and it helps us rumor control and just lets families know, we're thinking about you. We haven't forgotten you. So I want to just jump into an example. So this is our website. This is actually live right now with an Example Emergency Message listed across the top. So Example Middle School in this case is wildlife on campus. Now, this is a common cause of lockdowns in the Washoe County School District. Bear lockdowns happening in Klein all the time. So as you'll notice this information, we like to think that this is something you can find very easily, especially if you've heard a rumor or you got a text message from a student who's sitting in lockdown. We just want to be there to follow up and get information to you right away. So if you hop into this website, it's just kind of information about active emergencies that are happening. So this website, down here in the kind of constant update section, we're providing updates on emergency situations as they happen and at regular intervals. And we are telling you when we are going to update you next so that you are not terrified that somebody is withholding information from you. So in this case, we're continuing with the bear lockdown at the Example School. So throughout the day, we'll be explaining that we will update you on this, this is where we can get critical information, and just making sure that we have that continuity of contact with people.
And another thing this does for us is, again, Charles mentioned that closure, it provides closure of an incident. There's a lot of times families may be hearing, okay, the incident was concluded. However, the greater community at large, if they drive by and see police activity, if they hear something on the media, they're not always hearing the end result. So this provides a constant place to go, and we'll be sharing whatever it is that we can share at that time, as much information is available.
Then in addition to that, we have some other resources that'll be available on the page, FAQs on what some of these terms are, what the best practices are. To the best, we can address some of the common frustrations that we see with parents. Just kind of providing people with a little something to chew on when they're at that heightened state of concern. We want to make sure that this is what's going on, we've got things under control, we need to explain that well. We always want people to have the appropriate amount of concern. We don't want a parent who's not as concerned as they might need to be in an emergency situation, and we don't want anybody absolutely terrified and causing problems. People need to be prepared to take the appropriate action for their situation. So that is another large part of why we developed this page. And in addition to this information, we'll be posting it through our social media channels, we'll be monitoring news, we'll be working with our media partners. But the idea is that also, this is, it's hard to deny that this is official information coming in, especially when it's on washoeschools.net. And that's why we thought it was important to set up something like this on our website in addition to contacting families through Connect, using our social media and whatnot.
And with that, we'll take any questions if you have any. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you. This is fantastic to have the information and then to have the website and looking at it from the parent's perspective. I mean, I think that's really allowed us to just be even better when these things have happened. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. The only question I have is, is there a target timeline for when they get their first communication from us? I mean, I know it may not always be possible, but is there something we like to do?
Yes, there is. So in a code red, which is the most urgent and serious of our lockdowns, we will send a Connect Ed to our families within 15 minutes of being informed about that code red lockdown. 15 minutes, not a minute before and not a minute after. We are absolutely, as soon as we know about a lockdown, we start writing that script, we get it in the system, 15 minutes passed, we send it out, and we are absolute adamant about that. What we're always aiming for is for the principal to communicate to his or her families because that's way more reassuring than a nameless voice, nameless person from the school district. But if come an hour, the principal is not in a position to do that, then we send out another message, and so on and so forth, until the principal has the capacity and the situation has been resolved that they can take over the communications. It's like Charles was saying, where we have discovered that if there's a vacuum, we know if there's a vacuum, something's going to fill it. And it's the same with communications. If there's a communications vacuum, something's going to fill it, and it's not probably going to be the correct information or the messaging we want. So yes, we're all over that. Thank you for the question.
Trustee Frankel.
And thank you, Vice President Raymond, and thank you for this. This is great, and I agree with, I would echo what Trustee Taylor said about that this is a very important perspective to consider. And I'm looking at this, I went to the page myself, and I like, I can read it better here than up there, but the reports, and I really like the one that says, there is no new information. Because like you said, in the absence of any information, if you don't say there's no new information, it's going to get filled. I noticed the times are a little bit different between each one. Is your goal to consider doing it every 20 minutes or every half an hour? What's the timeline on that?
So for the most part, we've trained our staff to shoot for every 20 minutes or every half hour. That being said, oftentimes in an emergency situation, you have info now, and so there's no harm in releasing an early update. And again, that allows families and community members to make appropriate reactions for their situation.
I mean, there could be situations where we are sending out a message, like five messages in five minutes or one message in 30 minutes, but we do intend to communicate, communicate, communicate.
The other thing I want to appreciate is in the document that you've developed, it's quite thorough, and I think it's amazing, and I want to thank all the participants, including the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission for their work on this, as well as...
Yeah, you've got to thank JJ for this as well because she was instrumental in making that document happen.
And I think the section, I think is, one of the sections I think is really important is the section on reunification, and hopefully that will never have to be... is the section on reunification, and hopefully that will never have to be an issue for our schools. But I know that having just recently been at the state conference and there was a lot of discussion about the importance of reunification and information about that for parents, so I think our, our having that, you know, that in our, our materials is really important. So thank you, and thank you, JJ.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Great. Thank you all so much.
I need Ryne.
All right. So we are moving on to Agenda Item 3.04, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Select the Official Name of the New Kylie Ranch Area Elementary School Located in Spanish Springs From Among the Following As Recommended by the School Naming Committee: John Bohatch, Marcy Hers, Sessions S. Buck Wheeler. And this is for Possible Action.
So, good afternoon. For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. It's a pleasure to be here, Vice President Raymond, Trustees Superintendent Davis, to talk about the new elementary school in Spanish Springs and figure out the name for it. Joined by Riley Sutton, who is School Capital Needs PR Specialist. We had hoped to have Ms. Janassi with us, who is the chairperson of the naming committee, but she is really not very well today, and she sends her apologies. She's incredibly disappointed and wanted to lead the conversation. That being said, Riley, I'm going to hand over to you.
All right. Riley Sutton, Washoe County School District Communications Office and Liaison to the School Naming Committee. As Irene said, Lisa Janassi, the Chair of the Committee, she's got laryngitis and a migraine, so we just weren't getting anywhere with that today. Sends her apologies, so I'm going to run through this pretty quickly. We've done this a couple of times before, so hopefully, there's the clicker. All right, so, brief refresher, how it works is the community suggests names, those are the only names considered. The committee picks finalists over the course of two meetings, and then they send them to you, and that's what we're here to do today, is to pick the final name. A brief rundown of this school. We began soliciting names on September 13th. There was a school naming committee meeting on October 10th, where the submissions were narrowed to seven semifinalists, which were joined by the previous five finalists that were not picked for other schools. Again, as a reminder, if a name makes it to you and is not chosen as a finalist, or as the finalist for a school, those other not picked finalists roll over to the semifinal round of future schools. Then on November 7th, the committee narrowed it to three finalists. Some quick hit facts for you on this school's name, we had 27 submissions, 27 unique names submitted out of 41, so there were a couple of repeats. We had folks, 78 folks rank the semifinalist names once the committee had picked those, and then a number of public comments that came before the committee, and as, as they do, they moved the committee in a number of cases. In your board packet is the same information you see on the screen here of the finalists, some brief unofficial biographies of them coming straight from the naming submissions themselves, edited only for kind of clarity and brevity. And finally, the committee rankings, this is straight from the committee meeting on how many points each of these finalists received. The top three, again, being the ones that you're considering, and in order there, John Bohatch with 17 points, Marcy Hers with seven, and Sessions S. Buck Wheeler with six. With that, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions, I could go on and on, as I'm sure you all know, but in the sake of...
I just wonder if we should, do we have public comment on this one? Do we want to do that first? Okay, we'll go ahead with our public comment.
Keith Primus.
The reason why I'm here is that I worked for the Reno Police Department for 23 years, and during that time I worked several assignments, and during that process I had an opportunity to work with John Bohatch as a detective in the Sex Crimes Child Abuse Unit. He helped train me, and one of the things that you notice about John right away, if you, if you knew John, is that he's a very passionate person. He's passionate about his family, he's passionate about his friends, passionate about his work, and he was an exceptional detective, as far as clearance rate and getting the job done. And so, and I think for me, I would love to see his name attached to a, to a school because of that, and there's a couple other things too. John was, I think he was more than a police officer, he was a teacher, he's very intelligent, spoke, spoke Spanish. He always did things outside the realm of police work and helping kids and promoting the welfare, the best welfare for kids. And so with that, this has caused me to think about something else. I was thinking about the relationship between Washoe County and law enforcement as a whole. And, you know, whether it was canines, or the DARE program, or even myself being involved with kids in the elementary school process where we started a soccer program, and, you know, we put together monies and stuff like that to, to get uniforms for the kids. Within that whole framework there, what I, what I saw and what I see now is that that was a process of where the Washoe County School District and the Police Department got together because more than anything else, we wanted to see, that was for the welfare of the children, and for what, for what was best for the children. So with that, talking about that, and then thinking about John, I'd like to see John's name on the school because I, I think that's what he did. He promoted what was best for children. I mean, he, he put the bad guys away, he, he did what he had to do as a law enforcement officer, but I think that it fits in with what the whole Washoe County and what law enforcement do together, and can probably continue to do today as far as building, promoting the welfare of our children, and doing what's best for our children. So, that's it.
Thank you. Dave Robertson.
Dave Robertson, R-O-B-E-R-T-S-O-N. I'm the applicant for the school naming. I'm pleased to be here today to talk to you. This is something that I thought about for a long time, and I think that naming a school after John for what he did to this community, what he did for their department, would be appropriate. I'm hoping you will see the same. The area of the school is the same area where John lived, and where Lindsay, we all know Lindsay, where Lindsay was raised. So the area, the locale area, really fits. And not only does it fit the area, the geographical area, but it fits for the work that John did. John was a juvenile sex crime detective. And there were many times where he had to investigate, he had to talk to, he had to interview, re-interview offenders, victims, et cetera. We know what they do, and John was very, very good. He was a very good interrogator, interview. His interview technique was top, top of the line, one of the top in the department. And he put people away, he put offenders away who harmed the most precious commodity that we have in this community, and that's the children of this district, children of this county. I hope you will consider that, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Adam Wigneski.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to apologize.
I'm just, I'm just going to apologize right now. Thank you, Madam Vice President, Madam Superintendent, and all Board of Trustees members for allowing me to speak. I'm a 25-year veteran of law enforcement and retired as a homicide detective out of Reno Police Department. I, along with other active and retired members of the law enforcement community, have made numerous presentations in front of the school naming committee in the past, and have also spoke several times in front of the Board of Trustees in regards to having a school named after John Christopher Bohatch. I stand here again as I plead to have an elementary school named after my friend and partner, Reno Police Department Detective Police Officer John Bohatch. John Bohatch was shot and killed in the line of duty on August 22nd, 2001, doing what he loved, protecting our community. He was not just a police officer or detective, he was an educator, a mentor, and a protector of young children. John didn't care about the race or socioeconomic status of young victim and their family, he just wanted to make sure that all the young victims he came in contact with received justice and were safe. Try to picture this in your mind. It takes a very special person to sit down on the floor of a police interview room next to a terrified eight-year-old victim of physical and sexual abuse, and listen as this victim tries to speak through their sobs and tears, and tell their nightmarish story of terror and abuse to a total stranger. John would sit there patiently and befriend them and talk with them for hours, and yes, he too cried as he listened to their agonizing fears and to their horrific ways that they were abused and brutalized. He would assure them over and over again that they did nothing wrong. He was caring, concerned, supportive, compassionate, and kind-hearted. This is what John Bohatch did, and he did it very well. He loved his work, he loved the children, but most of all, he loved to see these innocent victims receive justice. He made certain that the evil predators who preyed upon their innocence were sent away to prison for a very long time. I know that the majority of the time this Board has voted to name a school after an influential, well-admired school educator, and that is very commendable and definitely warranted. Believe me, all of the teachers who put up with me when I attended school deserve to have a school named after them. But truly, please think of doing something really honorable, noble, and worthy by naming a school after a true community hero who gave his life to make sure our community was protected. Let me conclude by sharing a couple quotes by the late Maya Angelou. "People will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. If you find it in your heart to care for somebody else, you will have succeeded." This was John Bohatch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim Henderson.
My name's Tim Henderson, and I am here to talk about the new school being named after Sessions S. Wheeler. Sessions S. Wheeler was my great uncle. I knew my great uncle for about 45 years, and I never knew anybody who was more passionate about the state of Nevada. He dedicated his entire life to the state. So what, some of his major accomplishments that he did included being a teacher for over 32 years. He taught at Reno for 30 years and at Fernley for two years, and then he finished his career at UNR. And I would say, all of his students just loved my uncle. One of his biggest accomplishments was being a trustee for the foundation, for the Flashman Foundation. He did this for 20 years. Max Flashman and his estate set aside $200 million for projects for the state of Nevada and Northern Nevada. Some of the major things that he spent that money on were the Flashman Planetarium. Every year, over 50,000 people visit the planetarium, including hundreds of students and field trips. I know, I went there. They also funded two major buildings at UNR, including the College of Education, Bio-Technology and Natural Resources, and the Home Economics Building, which houses thousands of students every year, and is a lot, allows 10 different degrees at UNR. The foundation also was the seed money for the Desert Research Institution. That started in the early and late 1950s, and now employs over 200 people, 100 PhDs, and has an annual budget of $50 million. The foundation also built the Boy Scout Camp, Camp Flashman, and also helped fund the Junior Ski Program. My uncle was also an author. He taught, he wrote seven books, all about his favorite subject, Nevada. He was the third person inducted into the Nevada's, Nevada Writers Hall of Fame up at UNR. And after he passed, he wanted to make sure all the royalties from his books passed on to UNR, so he donated, he donated all the royalties to UNR. He was the first director of the fishing game, which was a two-year volunteer job that now has turned into the fishing game that we now, which employs over 250 employees and has a budget of $43 million. I mean, closing, I would really appreciate if you would consider naming this school after my uncle, and if not this school, maybe a future school. I think he deserves it, he dedicated his life to the state, and I know he would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Henderson.
I'm Bill Henderson, I'm the Executive Director of Sky Tavern, so I'm here to talk about Marcy Hers, for one thing. Kind of puts me in an interesting position because that's obviously my brother. Marcy created more than just a bunch of kids learning to ski, she created an environment where teachers are created. In a couple of hours, I get to go convince, oh, I don't know, a couple hundred parents that just joined up for the Junior Ski Program that they're going to become instructors, teachers for the kids. Now, most of these parents have never taught anything other than maybe potty training before. So we'll see, we'll see how it works, but it's worked for every year for 70 years. We also have a group of kids that we turn into instructors. These are kids that are maybe aged out of the program a little bit, they're still there for a reason, but they, we, we ask them to become instructors, and you know what? It works. You give a 13-year-old a bunch of eight-year-olds, the eight-year-olds learn faster, and the 13-year-old takes it seriously. You know, they start doing a little bit better in school, they raise their hands, they even dress a little better. I know, one of my sons was one of these kids, and now he's going to be a teacher. So the process works. Again, Sessions Wheeler was my, my great nephew, my great uncle. He was absolutely an amazing guy. He, he taught, there's no one my age or older that he wasn't their biology teacher if you grew up in Reno. It's just, it's just the way life works around here. So, he spent his whole life with Nevada, making Nevada better, doing everything he could to make it stronger, better, and educate everyone about it. His books are all about the Nevada desert. He taught me through an interesting story, all about biology, because we had a lot of family in Tonopah, so we spent a lot of time driving back and forth. Somehow, if you've ever been out there, the Mi'na trachulin migration, I ended up getting one home somehow. Took it to sixth grade class at Hunter Lake, where I found out that Edwin Van Gorder, my principal, did not like spiders. Made me put it in a coffee, coffee can with an entire roll of tape. He then called his mentor, Buck Wheeler, who made me take it back out, sitting in the front seat of his Jeep, and this is how I learned everything about biology, was all the ride back out to Mi'na to let the, let the poor, my new furry friend go. One last thing, naming a school is a big deal. It really is, it's a permanent deal. But I'd like you to think about this, is that whoever you name out of it, they create a culture to that school. If we go forward with Marcy Hers and name a school up in the mountains about, with her name, we're going to have a strong partner with Sky Tavern in what goes on up there and all those things. You name one after Buck Wheeler, we're going to have that whole process going on out in the desert about his culture, his legacy, his love for Nevada.
All right, Mr. Henderson, your time is...
All right, thank you.
Chris Bender.
My name's Chris Bender. I'm here to support the naming of the school for Marcy Hers. Marcy Hers was an elementary school teacher for 10 years in Northern Nevada, as you've all heard now a lot of times. She created and supervised baseball, basketball, volleyball for her students. And basically, it was a love of outdoors and athletics that caused her to create Sky Tavern. I knew Marcy Hers. I'm a good friend of Howard Hers. Used to have lunch in their kitchen on a regular basis. Anyway, I learned afterwards how important Sky Tavern has become, because I'm now the Chairman of the Board of the Junior Ski Program. And the impact that it has on families and, and children in this community is absolutely amazing. All you have to do is go talk to a group of people, and you just say, raise your hand if you were there, and almost 50% of the time, people do that. you were there, and almost 50% of the time, people do that. The Washoe County School Naming Committee ranked Marcy Hers first in the first go-around, second in the second go-around for a school name, and we are very humbled and grateful for that accolade. However, today, as we were deciding on a name for a school in Spanish Springs, all of the backers of the Marcy Hers school naming project have agreed that there are more appropriate individuals to have their name associated with this school in Sparks, and thus, we think it is best for us to defer at this time. We are asking that Marcy Hers's name stay in the running for a future school that is more suited geographically with the Junior Ski Program, which is up on Mount Rose, like the future schools owns Lessee Row Creek, for instance. This would allow Sky Tavern to play a greater role in a continuing process of education. And as Bill said, there is a culture that does get created by the naming of these various schools. Anyway, we thank you. Thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration for our request. And Bill does, he's in a real twist between the two schools, so.
Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, any, oh, trustee mayor?
Yes, if I may. I was at Walmart the other day shopping, and I came out and I saw a Jeep with an American flag on it, and it had a blue underneath the blue star background and across, and the guy was unloading his purchases. And I says, "What's that flag for?" And he told me that it indicates the long blue line for police officers. So I got talking to him, and he was a retired, well, he is a retired police officer. And he told me, basically, a story like yours, that John would go in and these children, little children, would be on the floor and hysterical and going through this terrible deal, and he had a comforting way about him, just absolutely comforting. And he told me, he says, "That was his gift. It was a gift to interrogate and calm these children down." So I had a kid at one of the schools I was principal at that was, had a bad thing, and I called the mother, and I says, "Do you know John?" "Oh, he's a lifesaver for me and my family." She said, "When he got down on the floor, everything changed. Everything changed, and I'm so thankful for that." And she says, "Oh, John, I know you're getting ready to name a school, and he's one of the names in that list." She says, "I would like it to be named after him." So in lieu of all the people that have testified and everything, and the shopper at Walmart, I would like to make a motion that we name the school after John. Oh, Bohatch, I gotten to, these people have made him real to me, you know? And I just, I really think that it'd be a nice thing to have it named after him. Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Riley or any other? Oh, sorry.
And mine isn't a question, it's more of a comment that, you know, this is, I think, the final time I'll get to participate in a school naming process, and I love this process, and I love how it brings the community out, and informs me and educates me as a community member about these incredible people in our community. And so, voting is both a gift and a blessing, but also extremely difficult because all of these individuals are so incredible. So I want to say that. I know we have seen John's name before, and I know we voted to name, I think, the elementary school in the south. I think that's when his name appeared, and I knew at that time that at some point, I hoped to be able to vote to support the naming of a school after him. And I think another thing that it, one of the things that it does, and as was said so well by a number of the speakers, is the connection, and we have our own school police department, but the role of our police in our community in protecting our children. And having worked in sexual assault and domestic violence for so many years, and just understanding and recognizing that connection by naming a school after a police officer, I think says a lot about how we value our collaborative work with other community partners to protect and support our children. So I just wanted to make those comments as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? A unanimous decision to name the new elementary school after Mr. John Bohatch. Thank you. Very exciting and touching opportunity, yeah. So we are moving on to agenda item 3.05, a presentation to the board regarding updates on the progress of new schools relative to the educational programming and community relations work by principals, as well as introducing the new colors and mascots of Nick Polakitis Elementary School, Sky Ranch Middle School, and Desert Skies Middle School. Another exciting presentation. At the topping off ceremony last week at Sky Ranch, I got a little sneak preview of the, so I'm excited for the presentation.
So once again, thank you very much, Vice President Lena Raymond, Superintendent Davis, trustees. We have a very exciting presentation to you today. We would do a drum roll, but I don't drum very well. There we go, all righty. So we have with us today Mr. Don Engotti, principal of Nick Polakitis Elementary School. Boy, I've come a long way saying that name.
And spelling it.
And spelling it, yeah, that's gonna be. We have the new assistant principal at Sky Ranch, Desert Skies, Desert Skies Middle School, Ms. Teresa Quintero, so welcome aboard. And we have Ms. Gina Leonard, the principal at Sky Ranch Middle School. And we also have her assistant principal as well, Bayless, Ms. Bayless, Mrs. Bayless, yes, we're super excited. She's very excited. So before they get started with their presentation, and obviously, we also have our chief communications and community engagement officer, Ms. Irene Payne, who will also share in this presentation and celebration. So we actually meet twice a month with our new principals, and they spend about two hours with us, myself, the chief of staff, our chief academic officer, our amazing Capital Projects staff, and we have an agenda every two weeks, and so we go through that agenda, and so we talk about academics, we talk about human resources. So it's an actually very structured type of meeting. You know, typically, when people say, "We have a school that was being built for a year, so what does the principal do?" I will tell you that these people are rocking and rolling pretty much every single day. They are very, very busy people. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to these fantastic administrators and let them get on with the show.
Going to be at Sky Ranch Middle School. So Don and Laura and Teresa, and I have been, have spent the last four months together doing everything that we can think of to put these schools together, between equipment and filling the building, and what do we do with our families, and how do we talk to our, you know, getting out and talking with our kids, and doing all of those things that need to be done. So we've had the amazing luxury to have this time together. I don't know what I would do without Don and Laura and Teresa and Jill, because now we have this time to dig in and really get deep into some things and put things together and place in our buildings. So Don can start with some of our major focus that we've done for all of our buildings.
Sure, and I'm Don Engotti, principal of Nick Polakitis Elementary School, and Vice President Raymond, Superintendent Davis, and board trustees, thank you for the opportunity. We've had a great opportunity, like I said, to open these new schools, and with a 21st century educational philosophy, the design specs of our schools with our steam labs, with our hub spaces, and being real creative with those new learning opportunities in those spaces within our building are to be fantastic for our students to be able to utilize on a daily basis, the technology that's going into our schools with the one-to-one devices, as well as just the platforms that teachers are going to be able to have accessible to them as well, and the professional learning opportunities that are going to go along with that to be provided to staff and their stakeholders that are involved in our schools. The look for in hiring, we've done some creative things with that, having some videos of applicants applying for our schools, also to really looking for teachers and staff that exhibit these 21st century learning philosophies and the competencies, as well as a technology background to be able to push our schools through to and beyond. And also, we had a great opportunity to go up to Seattle and view Microsoft, and also tour some one-to-one schools and some, you know, real tech savvy schools and see how they're doing things up there. That was a great opportunity for us to have a partnership with Microsoft and actually have our schools be models for other districts and other people to be able to come through and take a look at the great things that we're doing in our elementary schools and our middle schools as well.
This next section has some aerial footage of our, that we get monthly from our construction companies. So this is Desert Skies up in Sun Valley from Core Construction Company.
And I can tell you that I got to go out there for the first time last week. I went with Mrs. Peterson, who wanted to apologize, wanted me to apologize for her that she wasn't able to attend. She's on her way over the hill from Sacramento trying to get back home. But it is so exciting to go out there and see the construction site and where they're at in building it, and it's pretty amazing if you haven't been out there. It's a pretty amazing sight.
And then the next section is the drone video footage of Nick Polakitis Elementary School. So again, you can see how it's starting to come together. It's neat to see the parking lot in place, the walls for the classrooms being constructed, the block going up. Working with Adam, I know we've done some community efforts with Riley and some videos for the community as well, so it's neat to be able to see the progress that's taking place at the school as well. And every week, we go out there on a consistent basis. I'm meeting with the contractors, talking about some of the things inside of the school. We're sharing ideas with the architects and whatnot, because this is the model that we're going to build future schools with as well. So we want to try to get, you know, obviously, as much of it right as we can from the get-go as we move forward with our new schools as well.
And this one, last one is Sky Ranch. Not that there's any competition, but last week, we got the extreme honor to go out for the topping off ceremony, so we had the, I got the privilege of picking up about 10 kids from different, there are three elementary schools and their parents, driving them out to the site. They got to sign the beam, wear the hard hat, you know, the whole nine yards. So they was very excited, and I really appreciate the trustees that were able to attend. That was wonderful to have you there. So some of the things that we are working on crazy right now is we're in the middle, or starting our hiring process. Both Desert Skies and Sky Ranch, being a middle school, we are going to be hiring our lead department teachers that will come in and form our leadership team in our schools. Mr. Engotti gets to hire a few of them, not as many as we do being in a smaller elementary school. But we did hold a hiring information night a couple weeks ago. It was wonderful. We probably had about 250 people out to get the scoop, so to speak, on what's going to happen in these new schools. We are in the middle of doing applications right now. We've added a nice little 21st century kick to the application process, where teachers are submitting a video of themselves, just a little testing of their tech savviness. It's been an incredible way to get to know people before we can interview them on what they, you know, bring to our buildings and what they're looking forward to doing. After the holiday break, we will be hitting that hot and heavy parent outreach out at schools. We've already been there, but we will start ramping it up quite a bit as we go into the spring semester. Outreach to our fifth, for middle schools, our fifth graders or sixth graders. For Mr. Engotti, it's the kids that are moving schools, making sure they know what it's going to look like, where things are going to be. With any luck, we will be on time and in our buildings early. Well, okay, let's not go early, but we'll be in our buildings, so that we actually can do, you know, let, have our families in before the first day of school.
And gone of that community outreach piece, as we've created, you know, getting input and feedback for our mascots, for our stakeholders, having an opportunity to meet with both Double Diamond and Brown PTOs at their parent meetings. Also, I know the middle school has done that work as well, getting into the schools. I've also attended the transition, because we want to be sensitive with the fourth graders and the variance, that they have the right to stay at that other school. So just talking about what my school is going to be bringing to the table and the expectations with that, but also just shedding light for parents to be able to know that transition if they want their child to stay at their current school or possibly come over to Polakitis as well. So again, being that community outreach person, to be able to share those ideas and answer questions about that, so that's gone really well, you know, in addition to that, too.
And Mrs. Peterson has been out to the schools and working with parents and meeting with them to kind of alleviate their fears about bringing the sixth graders over to middle school. And then she's been working with the teachers, the site leadership team, and teachers to work on curriculum so that we are aware of the curriculum that they have, so it'll be seamless when they move into middle school.
I'm not sure that this is a question for you all, but I, since you mentioned moving in, is everything still on track time-wise, and would any major snowstorms this week delay that?
We say yes, we're on time.
Yeah, we're ready, we're ready.
They tell us we're good.
We know August 12th are coming, so we have to have it ready to go, but yeah, it's.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions before we get to the, you know, glitter?
Don't be doing anything yet. So, oh, for the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. So this is the first time, goodness knows how long, many years, that we've been able to do what we're going to do and what we're going to share with you. It's actually the first time I've been involved in this process, so it's incredibly exciting. And we have worked with our principals on the design of the mascot and the school colors. I would say fortunately, each of the principals pretty much knew, they had some very firm ideas around what they were looking for, what the mascot would communicate, and as they've all said, they have done a remarkable job in terms of community outreach, seeking input, listening to people's opinions. So really, all we had to do was to kind of facilitate the process. And I have to thank Melissa Gillis, who is the person from communications who does all the design, pretty much you see everywhere, it's down to her talent. But with that, I am going to hand over, so you can share one at a time, and so we do a big reveal, and then, and then after this, we're actually going to do Facebook Live and share this, you know, share these wonderful mascots on Facebook. So over to you.
Up you go. Okay, so the Polakitis Wildcats. And so we surveyed our stakeholders and community, and we came up with Wildcats, the Big Horns or the Eagles, and the final vote went out, it was Wildcats with the colors of the royal blue with the black, white, and gray. So it's kind of ironic with the cats in the area, and a lot of cats came back with mountain lions and bobcats and tigers and lions and some horses and non-horses. I know, tigers are the tough one, so there are a lot of Wildcats in the area, so the Nick Polakitis Wildcats. But again, a shout out to our communications department, they were phenomenal with assisting with this and creating it, too.
Okay, so after two surveys and over 327 final votes, our Desert Skies mascot is the.
Scorpions.
Guess I could do that.
Yeah, there you go.
And I would also.
And I would also say with the help of Ms. Gillis, she worked very hard on the eyes. I know that Mrs. Peterson and I went back and forth and wanted to make sure that they were kind of friendly eyes and they weren't looking too mean or savage, but they, I think they turned out really great.
Yeah.
So being Sky Ranch, our, my first survey came back overwhelmingly something flying. So we landed after about close to 600 votes. So wonderful participation, but we are the Sky Ranch Thunderbolts. So it's a World War II airplane based on a World War II airport.
Yeah.
And Navy blue and orange. Navy blue and orange. Dun-dah!
Yep, there we go.
There you go.
Yeah.
And nobody has Thunderbolts.
Can we do that one more time? One more time.
Here we go, one more time.
Okay. All right.
You have a better angle for that too.
Of course I do.
Okay.
That's cool. And the artwork was superb. She did a beautiful job.
For the record, I'm in pain. So we've made a little, we forgot something quite important, and that important thing is a Sharpie, because the plan was for our principals to sign this artwork and to give the artwork to their respective trustees. So what we can do is you can give the artwork to your trustees and then we'll sign it later on. But it's, you know, yeah, there for you.
You get two. You get two.
I think there's three of you. There's two, there's three of you. I don't know, there's three. I'm looking for something new.
I want the Thunderbolt. No, he, no.
No, I'm not the Thunderbolt. Boy, that's gorgeous. That's, that's Sun Valley, yeah. You sign it. And this whole crowd doesn't have a Sharpie? Boy, what kind of school district is that? There we go. I knew they had the B1. I knew Scott would be up.
Did you shot? Okay.
Yeah, you want way.
How about, how about we get another one made?
Yeah, because actually every school has a trustee.
Yeah, because every school has a trustee.
Yeah.
Famous signature.
Can we do that?
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. I'm never going to have a school built. You better. They're never going to build a school in my district. No. I don't go that far down.
Thank you for the exciting presentation on the colors and the mascots. And we are going to move on to Agenda Item 3.06, discussion and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the proposed adoption of Board Policy 7210 Information Technology Services and Operations, which speaks to equity and access to information technology by students and staff and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period for possible action. And we are joined by Robert Sidford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer. Thank you.
Thank you for the record, Robert Sidford, Chief Information and Innovation Officer. I bring to you the, by far, the most exciting item of today's agenda, probably only because it's the last, but okay. We brought to you the, brought to Board Policy Committee on November 6th, the Board Policy 7210 Information Technology Services and Operations, and we bring it to you today, hopefully for preliminary approval and initiation of the public comment period. Primarily, this covers our, this directs the district to create a technology plan for the district and authorizes us to create regulations and procedures that will assure technology equity and availability for all users, students, staff, and others. And we have incorporated recommendations from the Board Policy Committee to include education for students and families about personal data privacy and security and use of the district website to provide that information to our families. With that, there's really not much more to say unless you have any particular questions. So.
All right, if there are no questions, I'll call for a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? And it moves unanimously into the 13-day public review process. Moving on to the end of the agenda and, oh, I forgot. Public comment. Should I just do it right now? All right, there was no public comment on Agenda Item 3.06. Thank you. All right, so that, now we will move on to Board Reports, Agenda Item 4.01. And if the board will allow, I think I will go first because I have a special presentation to make in lieu of a board report. So, and I know our President Katie Simon-Holland is very sad not to be able to do this, but I am very honored to be able to do it in her place. At the recent Nevada Association of School Board meeting down in Las Vegas and the awards that came with that, we, the Washoe County School District was able to award one of our local reporters a special award for, a media award for outstanding education reporting in a television, radio, or online journalism format. And the recipient of that award has joined us this evening with her daughter. Her name is Anya Orichega, and I'll just read a little bit about her before I give her her award. "Anya understands that education is one of the most important concerns of her viewers, and she covers the school district on a regular basis. She brings a deep and abiding sense of integrity to her work every day on every story. From complicated stories about school board meetings, votes, and subsequent effects on students and staff, to the day-to-day coverage of activities in our schools, we can always depend on Anya to ask hard questions, put together the facts, and present a balanced and fair story." And Anya is a bilingual reporter for Intervision Television. So congratulations.
I just want to say thank you for this recognition. A lot of people know that I really like to cover education, and I have three reasons. The first one, obviously, is my daughter, because when I see her, I see the future. And I know if we invest in our children, we are investing in the future. My brother, which is a very dedicated teacher, and also my mother. I remember my mother teaching me that education is very important, and we used to take a bus almost an hour just to go to my private English lessons because she thought that maybe one day I was going to use that skill. And I'm still working on it. And I just want to say thank you to the school district, especially the Communications Department that always is willing to help us as much as they can. And I hope that one day we all understand that education is not just the job of the teacher, but also the responsibility of the parents and the whole society.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to Board Reports from the rest of the group. Dr. Taylor, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, just all of us that were able to attend the State Association meetings, great meetings there that were held there. And we also had an opportunity to witness our colleague, the Godfather. Just the Godfather, receiving an award because he got his public, public, what is it, a public official?
I got that last year.
Oh, that was, what'd you get this year?
It was Dottie's.
Oh, yeah, it was basically the Lifetime Achievement Award. That was basically what that was, and John took longer than anybody else to come back to his seat because he talked to everybody on the way. But
You know, I told everybody, I got one more term in the basket there. If you don't shape up, I may go for election.
You may come back?
Yeah.
He may come back. But it was great to see, especially your last time there. And then we all, many of us also got a chance to see Neil's daughter and another student from our district compete in the equestrian competition, which was absolutely fascinating, fascinating to see. And so I was very proud, one, that a colleague's daughter was there, she's a product of our district, and another student from our district participated as well. So that was very cool. Yeah, very cool.
Friday was my birthday, so I'll be taking gift cards, so.
Where do you shop?
You know, I like Barnes &amp; Noble. I like Petco and PetSmart, and Walmart's always good, so.
But you'll accept dollar stores?
Yeah, I'll accept anything.
Let's see, I also attended the meeting in Las Vegas. I was there like a long time, sitting and sitting and sitting, but we finally got us an executive director, I think. There's going to be a meeting that John and I have to participate in, December the 4th. That's a week from today. And then we'll know if that's finalized. I flew back early because I was, I attended Mark Smith's, Smitty's service, Celebration of Life at Worcester, and I have to say that school was so clean. It was just so clean. So when we say that the schools are clean, they are. And Worcester did an exceptional job of just playing host to that. And I got to tell you, it was a very moving tribute to just what teachers do for kids. Mark was a, not an occupational, an occupational therapist, I think, for youth, the young kids who had fine motor skills and gross motor skill deficits. And he did a fantastic job, and he was also a coach at Worcester for 17 years, I believe. And he was a quarterback coach. I'm not going to say coach because I know that other coach would be upset. But he was the quarterback coach at Worcester and also the quarterback coach for Minogue for a long time. And he was a track coach. He did so much, and he gave so much of himself to this community. And it reflected in that, the outpouring of community that, you know, that just showed up. They were so excited that a school board member was there and they realized that everyone else was still traveling, was at a conference. So thank you for allowing me to fly back early. I think that was JJ who changed my reservations. And I also attended Sky Ranch, is that the school?
Sky Ranch.
Sky Ranch, okay, I get it mixed up. The beam lifting, and that was really nice, especially to see the kids there. And I also got a chance to write on that, and I think Vice President Raymond did also. So our writings are on that beam that was lifted. And I was frightened the whole time because I was just thinking that it was going to fall. So it was nice to be there and it was a great morning. So thanks to everyone who put that together because that was really done well. Riley, I think facilitated that, so thanks to Riley and everyone else who participated.
Well, I visited three schools, went to the convention. I wished I'd been at the funeral for Smitty. He was a special guy, special guy. And this last April at the NIA Hall of Fame, he got inducted into Hall of Fame. And they have like 200 people there for like 10 inductees, and all but 10 were for Smitty. And he was loved by everyone, so I'm glad you got to go to that. But things are looking good in our district. It's just a wonderful thing. And if I could make a suggestion, it'd be nice if the three plaques like they got here, if they would sign one for each of us. You know, wouldn't that be nice? Did everybody get one of each of the schools? Who is?
Tracy? You will be making that happen for you, trustee man? So, are you good?
Yeah. Everybody, everybody's
That's going to come out of board, sir.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. Yes, I, too, was in Las Vegas for the state conference, and it was great to be there. There was a lot of great information shared, and I appreciated the opportunity to spend time with, outside of our stressful situations with my colleagues. I also had the opportunity to be at the topping off ceremony at Sky Ranch, and I, too, got to sign the beam, and I loved seeing the kids there interacting with, you know, with each other and thinking about their future. I do want to do a shout out to Core Construction for their role in participating with that and just being a part of, being such great partners in the construction of that school in Desert Skies. I also had the opportunity last week to go on a ride-along with our school police, and I want to thank Sergeant Connie Harper for spending a good chunk of the day with me. And we had the opportunity to go to a couple of schools that had situations going on, and I actually got a chance to go spontaneously with one of our officers, Debbie Brodigam, who has her dog Seago, and they were doing a, and Seago is great, and they basically do a search for drugs, and it was great to spend time with her and see them in action, and just to really watch the positive interactions with the students as well. And I'm always so impressed with our school police and want to thank them all for the great job that they do. And then this morning, I had an opportunity to go with trustee Raymond, Vice President Raymond, to Sparks Middle School for our talk with the trustees, and boy, did they feed us well. And, but most importantly, boy, did they share a lot of their experiences, their ideas, their concerns, and it was a great group of kids from their Make a Difference, their MAD program, eighth graders. So that was a real treat, and thank you, Vice President Raymond, for doing that with me. It was great fun.
Anante, do you have anything to share?
Yeah. So, we had our SAC meeting last week and Scott, I don't want to call you Scott Kelly, Mr. Kelly was there and with his son. And honestly, being on the board for two years for our, well, our student board, I see the dynamic between the two boards change. And honestly, this year, everyone's so interactive and you, like, I'm pretty sure you guys saw the, during the last board meeting, two of the SAC members came here, which were Naella and Matthew Swackhammer, I believe. And both, yeah, both of them were here, and I, from what I've heard, they were very, very, like, they were very excited being here, and they're very, they're Did everybody get one of each of the schools?
She's ahead of you.
Who is?
Tracy. We will be making that happen for you, trustee mayor. So are you good?
Yeah. Everybody gets one.
And that's going to come out of board, sir.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. Yes, I, too, was in Las Vegas for the state conference, and it was great to be there. There was a lot of great information shared, and I appreciated the opportunity to spend time outside of our stressful situations with my colleagues. I also had the opportunity to be at the topping-off ceremony at Sky Ranch, and I, too, got to sign the beam. And I loved seeing the kids there, interacting with, you know, with each other and thinking about their future. I do want to do a shout-out to Core Construction for their role in participating with that and just being a part of, being such great partners in the construction of that school in Desert Skies. I also had the opportunity last week to go on a ride-along with our school police, and I want to thank Sergeant Connie Harper for spending a good chunk of the day with me. And we had the opportunity to go to a couple of schools that had situations going on, and I actually got a chance to go spontaneously with one of our officers, Debbie Brodigam, who has her dog Seago, and they were doing a, and Seago is great, and they basically do a search for drugs. And it was great to spend time with her and see them in action, and just to really watch the positive interactions with the students as well. And I'm always so impressed with our school police, and I want to thank them all for the great job that they do. And then this morning, I had an opportunity to go with trustee Raymond, Vice President Raymond, to Sparks Middle School for our talk with the trustees, and boy, did they feed us well. But most importantly, boy, did they share a lot of their experiences, their ideas, their concerns. And it was a great group of kids from their Make a Difference, their MAD program, eighth graders. So that was a real treat, and thank you, Vice President Raymond, for doing that with me. It was great fun.
Anante, do you have anything to share?
Yeah. So we had our SAC meeting last week, and Scott, I don't want to call you Scott Kelly, Mr. Kelly was there and with his son. And honestly, being on the board for two years for, well, our student board, I see the dynamic between the two boards change. And honestly, this year, everyone's so interactive, and you, like, I'm pretty sure you guys saw during the last board meeting, two of the SAC members came here, which were Naella and Matthew Swatkem, I believe. And both, yeah, both of them were here, and from what I've heard, they were very, very, like, they were very excited being here, and they're very, they're, what's better than exciting? They're very, very passionate about being here, and they really want to advocate for student voice, which is a really big thing about our board, is that students have a voice and that students can put out their opinion and not be shamed to put their opinion. And to see that the board is really following up on that message on top of like getting more representatives, we finally got a hug representative during our last meeting, which is really exciting. And honestly, the way that our board is developing this year, I'm really excited to see what's going to happen for the future.
Superintendent Davis?
I want to give a shout-out to Connie Hall's first-grade class at Dietrichson Elementary School. Well, yeah, they probably did give me that call I got, but I spent my first day team teaching all day in first grade, and oh my goodness, I got to pick fifth grade next time, but it was so fun. Because here's the thing, when you, you know this, if you're an educator in kindergarten, first grade, one, I am the prettiest and the best superintendent in the whole wide world, and I have more hugs than John will ever get. But they were just great, and they were doing some powerful things around ancient civilization. We got to do a lot of math. Of course, guided reading lessons, like, they had me busy. She's like, you got a reading group over here, like, we doing word cards and sight words, and it was just so fun to be in the room all day. And it was so great for the kids to be so excited about the superintendent spending the whole day with them and asking questions about my real job as the superintendent. So very exciting to do that, and we will probably kick off the next one in January. I don't know, the schedule was crazy, but it is a great time. And what we do is at lunch, we just go in the lunchroom and hang out with the teachers, and they can ask questions about whatever they want to ask about. And so some great questions, and not just about like school, like, they asked questions about JAG, a lot of things. So a great opportunity for me to engage with the staff. And I know Kristen's doing her, starting kicking off her shadow days with students and administrators and teachers, so I think there's some good work being done around just engagement.
Trustee Mayor.
Yeah, you know, I heard a rumor in my hometown of Sparks, I don't know if this is true or not, maybe the chief of staff could figure this out, but I heard that you were on crossguard duty, and it's a record traffic jam for the city of Sparks. Is that true, Chief of Staff? Oh, you already know it's true, huh? Good for you.
And what's cool is I did duty, lunch duty, I did recess, I did after-school duty, I did, I mean, and the great thing about it is, is like, I'm not new to that, like, that's part of what I've done as a teacher. But it's great to see just when you're out at duty how our teachers engage with our families. Connie's duty is the duty traffic jam, whatever, but she knew all the kids, not just the kids in her class, she knew their siblings and their families, and we forget about just those little pieces that happen, that happens outside of the classroom and not inside of the classroom. So thank you to all our employees for what they do every day for all our families.
Thank you. Are there any future Agenda Item requests? No, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I do have one. I recently received a report I requested regarding safety and the school walk zones. And so I want to be reviewing that, and David Bobzian, our liaison, Councilman David Bobzian, our liaison from the city of Reno, and I will be meeting to discuss that. So at the appropriate time, I'd like to bring that back to the board and with recommendations and such.
Thank you. All right, I see our chief communications officer waving back there.
All right, let's be consistent. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, is there any public comment? No public comment? I'm holding on? We're missing a cell phone. Like, slowly unraveling. I am going to say next meeting announcement, December 11th at 2:00 PM here at the administration building. Bring your cookies, and I will adjourn the meeting at 5:33.